Alrighty, first of all I want to say good evening to everyone. At this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park and let's see, what is the acronym for the BPCRH concurrent? So at this point, I will go ahead and ask Pastor Jackson, I don't know if Pastor Flores is here, they could both or one lead us in an indication, so. I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so, thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come before you right nine in name of the Lord. You say to acknowledge you in all of our ways and you would direct our path, Father God. And there's many issues that are here today, Lord, that the citizens of Baldwin Park and some of the churches of Baldwin Park are concerned with. City Hall has to make decisions, Lord. We have the mayor, touch him, give him wisdom, knowledge and understanding, and so the city council people, Lord. And we're asking you to put our hands upon our police department and all the responders, the first responders that go out and hit the fires like our fire department and those that are in the streets like something that is happening down the street here, something that is happening here. So what is it happening in our city, Lord, is that we need you. We need wisdom and knowledge and understanding and how to govern this city, Lord God. We need you in our schools, Father God, we need you in touching our teenagers, Lord God, we need you in breaking the power, the gangs and the drugs that go forth in this city, Lord. What we need, Lord, is a revival to take place. We're asking you to touch our businesses, Lord God, that the city of Baldwin Park may flourish, Lord God. And as the people that are here looking for answers, Lord, that they will find the answer. And you said, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God and your righteousness, and all of these things will be added unto thee." In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Just don't, Father Mike, you want to come up here and say some words? No? Okay, alright, just, I just noticed you there.
Quick later.
Alright, sounds good, alright. So at this point, we'll all please face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, infinite, everlasting.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I will ask at this point our city clerk, Ms. Jean M. Ayala, to conduct roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Present.
Mayor Potam Monica Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, thank you very much. This way, I will move a motion to excuse our city treasurer Maria Contreras, I know she went through a hip replacement, so that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? City, none, so move.
And I just want to ask that we keep her in our prayers so that she can be back soon.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And real quick, I also want to close on behalf of Carlos Robles, graduate of Baldwin Park High School, who attended the funeral services not too long ago. So our deepest condolences goes out to the family and to his immediate family as well. A well-established family in the city of Baldwin Park for many, many years. Alright, councilmembers wishing to close, anyone else? If not, what we want to do at this point, kind of request that we bring up the actual, I'm going to move up the public hearing on rent, yes. So let's, let's, hold on, where is that one? Let's pull it out. Number 12? Alright, so I'll go ahead and make a motion at this point to bring up the public hearing on number 12, an urgency ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to temporarily stabilize rent in the city. So that is my motion to bring that up as the first item for agenda, is there a second?
Oh, second.
The sec, who's second?
Second.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Alright, so what we'll do at this point, we'll go ahead and have a, we're going to, it's going to be a public hearing, so who wants to cover it for right now?
I'll go ahead and ask them, please.
Yes.
I would give the staff report.
Yes, go ahead, yes, Frank, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This is an urgency ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to temporarily stabilize rents in our city and to require a just cause evidence to evict anyone during the next 180 days. This, our staff report, the city staff report is requesting the city council consideration and adoption of an urgency ordinance that will retroactively and temporarily freeze rents for 180 days for specified rental units in the city of Baldwin Park and require landlords to establish just cause to evict a tenant during the term identified in this urgency ordinance. This urgency ordinance will be retroactive to October 1, 2019, excuse me, this will be retroactive to September 4, 2019. This temporary freeze contained in this urgency ordinance can be modified and/or extended in duration by the city council of Baldwin Park. The urgency ordinance is designed to protect Baldwin Park tenants from rent increases and arbitrary evictions. While the city studies the issue of rent stabilization in the city and is able to draft and pass a thorough and detailed rent stabilization ordinance. In cities and county areas that are considering rent stabilization ordinances, it is not uncommon to see landlords spike rents once they realize the rent stabilization may occur. In addition, in cities and county areas that are considering rent stabilization ordinances, it's not uncommon to see landlords evict tenants just before the ordinance goes into effect, for no justifiable or justified reason, in order to try and raise the rent before the rent stabilization ordinance goes into effect. When landlords spike rents in substantial amounts, it causes potentially destabilizing effects on the family unit because the large increase cannot be afforded by the renter and the family could end up homeless or in some other unstable situation. The same is true when landlords unnecessarily evict tenants for no apparent reasons other than to spike rents ahead of a rent stabilization ordinance. In addition, unreasonable evictions and spiking of rents could cause a public safety concern for families and children in the city of Baldwin Park if they become homeless or in some other unstable situation. Staff recommends that the city council approve, ratify and adopt an urgency ordinance authorizing a 180-day temporary freeze on rents and requiring just cause to evict a tenant in the city of Baldwin Park during the 180-day period described above. This temporary freeze contained in this urgency ordinance can be modified and/or extended in duration by the city council of Baldwin Park. This urgency ordinance will be retroactive to September 4, 2019. That is staff's recommendation.
Alright, at this point, what I'm going to do, I'll just let everyone know, we're going to open up the public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak in favor, and it has to be, it has to be on this particular subject. So at this point, I will bring up those that are not in favor, so we have to give an opportunity to those that choose not to. So I'll go ahead and open up, at this point, I will now declare the public hearing open.
So which one?
In favor.
Right, let's do it, in favor and favor of, yes. So at this point, I'll ask all those individuals to come up here that are in favor, you're walking to come up to the lectern here, just say your name. Thank you, appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Edith Gonzalez and I am the district director for Supervisor Solis's Tinker Valley Field Office, and I would like to read a statement on behalf of the supervisor who regrettably could not be here tonight. Thank you, Mayor and city council members, for taking up this important initiative, protecting our tenants and ensuring that LA County remains to be a place for all people is very important to me. This is why in November 2018, the Board of Supervisors adopted an interim rent stabilization motion, which I am proud to have co-authored. This was an effort to stabilize families who may be facing homelessness, evictions and unaffordable rent increases. When the county saw the number of tenants reaching out to us to ask for mediation and file complaints around significant rent increases, the Board of Supervisors extended the ordinance in April 2019. Many of these requests for assistance were coming from some of the most economically disadvantaged areas of an incorporated LA County. The interim rent stabilization ordinance allowed the county departments to document the tremendous need for affordable housing, develop an infrastructure that would help both tenants and landlords in mediation efforts, and assist them that in the long term would enable the county to track evictions and vacancies and serve as a safety net. During just one of the several months that the interim ordinance was adopted, our county department received over 133 new inquiries regarding tenant protections. Of those, 60 inquiries were on just cause evictions. Since the implementation of the ordinance, we have had many more inquiries on just cause evictions. This is why with community input, we expanded just cause eviction protections for all rental units. The reality is that we cannot simply build our way out of the housing situation that we are in. Residents throughout the county and local jurisdictions are rent burdened, are severely rent burdened. This is why I applaud your effort today. I see Baldwin Park as a partner in helping families stay in their homes. When families, individuals and children are safely housed and economically secure, we see better outcomes for our entire communities. My office looks forward to providing any insight from the county's own rent stabilization policies and programs as you work on yours so that together, we can improve the lives of our residents. Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Alright, go ahead, thank you.
Hello, everyone, city council members, Monica Garcia, Paul Hernandez, Alejandra Avila, Ricardo Pacheco, and Mayor Manuel Lozano. My name is Leonardo Quesada, resident of Baldwin Park, and I'm talking on behalf of the favor of passing the rent control. A lot of the families has been suffering by the rent increase, and I cannot ignore that. And also, our school districts, where's our kids? They're moving out because their rent are being increasing, so a lot of us cannot be able to pay high rents. And it will be nice to have this rent control, freeze it, and have something in balance for both parties, you know. Please use your best judgment and use it fairly, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Alicia Escalante.
Thank you.
Alicia Escalante.
Thank you.
My name is Alicia Escalante.
Señora alcalde y miembros del consilio.
Council members, council.
Tengo 19 años viviendo aquí en Baldwin Park.
I've been living in Baldwin Park for 19 years.
Por 17 años vivimos muy tranquilos en el mismo apartamento.
We've lived for 17 years in the same apartment very peacefully.
Hasta que por razones familiares nos pidieron el lugar.
Until for personal reasons or family reasons, they asked for the place back.
Creímos que iba a ser fácil encontrar otro lugar.
We thought it would be easy to find another place.
Lo cual no fue así. Tuvimos que irnos a rentar dos cuartos con una amiga a Walnut.
But it wasn't like that, we had to go rent two rooms at a friend's house in Walnut.
Y mis dos hijos mayores no nos pudieron seguir porque ellos ya estaban aquí acomodados en sus trabajos y escuelas.
And our two older kids could not come with us because they were already established at their jobs.
A ellos otra amiga le rentó un cuarto. Fue muy triste tener que separarnos y seguimos buscando aquí y en ciudades vecinas, pero mis hijos solo querían seguir aquí en su ciudad.
They were able to rent a room from another friend of ours, and it was very sad to, for us to depart, go our different ways, but they're still looking to find a place here in the city that they love.
Nos tardó ocho meses encontrar un nuevo apartamento.
It took us eight months before we found another apartment.
Fue muy difícil porque los lugares donde rentan en menos de 1,500, a todos los que visité estaban en malas condiciones.
It was very difficult because every apartment, the budget that I had, which was 1,500, were in very poor conditions.
Y los que rentan con tres recámaras o más, más de 2,000.
And the three-bedroom apartments are more than $2,000.
Para poder calificar fue otro problema, te piden comprobantes de sueldo mensual, que tienes que ganar más de una tercera parte de lo que rentas.
In order to qualify for these apartments, they ask for statements or vouchers proving your income.
Te revisan tus cuentas de banco y sobre todo debes tener buen crédito.
They also go over your bank accounts and you should also have good credit.
Encontré un lugar muy bonito, con las condiciones que yo necesitaba. Nos estamos adaptando a pagar más de 400 de lo que yo pagaba.
I found a really nice place with all the things that I needed. We have gotten used to paying $400 above what we used to pay.
Y creo que si sigue aumentando más la renta nos causaría una desestabilización en nuestra familia.
And I believe that if the rents keep going higher, it will cause a imbalance in our family.
Por esta razón les pido a ustedes, señor alcalde y miembros del consilio, apoyen esta moción del congelamiento de renta.
This is the reason why I ask you, Mayor, and members of council, to support this proposal.
De antemano les agradezco y también me gustaría que consideren que lo que sigue es el control de renta y poder trabajar junto con ustedes. LA Voice está trabajando muy duro para poder obtener el control de renta aquí en nuestra ciudad. Gracias.
I'm thankful and I ask that you keep in mind that what's to follow is rent control. LA City, LA Voice, it's very thankful and we're very hopeful that we can work together. Thank you. Thank you.
Excellentísimo, señor alcalde y miembros del consejo de Baldwin Park. Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Magdalena Fresnillo y pertenezco a la Iglesia de San Juan Bautista.
My name is Magdalena Fresnillo and I belong to the.
To la Iglesia de San Juan Bautista.
The St. John.
De Bautista, de Bautista. Y la razón por la que estoy aquí es porque quiero apoyar la ordenanza 1444.
And the reason why I'm here is because I want to support ordinance 94, 1444.
La cual congela temporalmente el incremento a las rentas.
Which freezes temporarily the increase of rents.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Marvin Andrade, I'm the director of organizing for LA Voice, but most important, I am a resident of Baldwin Park. And I am here tonight in support of urgent ordinance 1444. Many friends, many of them here today, are suffering because of the housing crisis that is happening in this city and this county. Many of them have told me that their rent has increased upwards of 500% just this year alone. Many others have experienced rent increases every year for the past five years. It is a crisis that is displacing families, it is a crisis that is affecting many people in an unjust way. And we are here tonight to urge you to vote for this ordinance and then because it is a first positive step. Eventually, what we want is a rent control across the board that will prevent greedy homeowners from increasing the rent of tenants in Baldwin Park unjustly. Thank you very much.
Very much, appreciate that.
Hello, good evening. My name is Margarita Gabriela and I come from the city of Highland Park. I moved here about three years ago and I was one of the few of the many lucky people who applied for the building Metro Village right next door. And it has been a blessing in disguise and at the same time, just having to be stuck in this loss of confusion. There has been probably about four increases within my rent in the last three years. And to my best knowledge and understanding, it's supposed to be low-income housing and to help out the people within the structure. And with having to move over here, that wasn't not only the issue that many people are experiencing right now. I found myself thinking that taking the chance to come and move from Highland Park to here, I took the chance and I left two jobs and I stopped going to school because of this drastic change, this relocation. It hasn't been easy for my family, it hasn't been easy for my daughter, and now with this latest increase, and I'm not the only one who has gone through this, a few other tenants there tell me their stories, it's hard, it is difficult. It has been one of the most difficult things I've had to endure this year and these past years, as a matter of fact. It's not at all, I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair at all, because we were never, or at least for me and I speak for myself, we were never told nor specified how they compute these numbers to come up with our rent. They say it's based on your income, but it truly isn't. For a three-bedroom, I'm paying close to 1,600, but there's only one of us working at the moment. I've been at home with my son these last three years and he's about to reach the preschool age and I'm looking forward to that because it has been nothing but paycheck to paycheck to paycheck and it has been a great struggle in the midst of it all. And I truly hope that you find it in your heart to support us in this movement because it's affecting a lot of people. And that's what I want to tell you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Did you say it went up, is it four times, is that what you said?
It's gone four times.
Metro Village?
Yes, in the last three years that I've lived there, it's gone up four times.
Alright.
And there has been not just that issue, but also with the management and with the company that manages the building.
Yes.
And I'm not too sure who owns the building, because every time I want to speak with someone, I'm not able to get the answers I need.
We will look into that, thank you.
Yeah, you know what, we'll refer you over here to Mr. Ben Martinez and he'll give you the information. Alright, moving along, public communication, okay, step up, thank you.
Buenas noches para el señor alcalde y los miembros del consilio.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council.
Mi vecina y yo estamos aquí porque queremos que nos ayuden de alguna manera, nosotros fuimos, estamos siendo desalojados.
My neighbor and I are here asking you to help us, we are being evicted right now.
Yo tengo cuatro hijos, tres de ellos nacieron en esta unidad de apartamentos, yo tengo 11 años de vivir en esta locación.
I have four children, three of them were born in this apartment that we live in. We have, I have been living in this building for 11 years.
Nos dieron la notificación en julio, los últimos de julio, que nosotros nos iban a incrementar la renta en 200 dólares.
They gave us a notice, a rent increase notice back in June.
Nos dieron 200 dólares en septiembre y después de septiembre, ahorita en octubre, nos dieron el desalojo de 60 días.
They raised the rent $200 on September and then recently now we are being evicted.
No hay ninguna razón para que a nosotros nos desalojen, nosotros hemos estado siempre con nuestra renta a tiempo, nuestros hijos están sufriendo las consecuencias.
There's no real reason for us to be evicted, we have always been on time with our rent and our kids are suffering the consequences.
Ellos no, nosotros dependemos de Tracy, ellos, este, el autobús llega por ellos, nosotros siempre, los niños están ahorita en shock, no sabemos qué hacer porque nos dieron el desalojo para primero de enero. Nos dieron el desalojo.
For January, first.
A nosotros, este.
Depending on who? The trace?
No, ellos van a Tracy's school.
They go to, our kids go to Tracy's school and they are very stressed out because we just received the eviction notice and they don't know what's going on.
Que nos tenemos que mover en enero, enero.
And that we have to move out by January 1st.
No sabemos qué hacer porque las rentas están caras y los últimos, o sea, ¿qué podemos hacer en ese?
And we don't know what to do because rents are just so high, I mean, we don't know what to do.
Queremos la ayuda de ustedes que de alguna manera congelen eso, de que a nosotros nos paren el desalojo de la noche a la mañana sin ninguna, sin ninguna, este, razón para poder hacerlo.
We ask you that you implement this freeze, that somehow you stop our evictions, that it happened just overnight.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Rosa Nuño.
Good evening.
Y estoy en el mismo problema que mi vecina, fuimos ocho familias desalojadas, unas viviendo más de 15 años.
I'm on the same boat as my neighbor, there's been 12 families who have been evicted.
Y ahorita las rentas, ahorita se desocupó un apartamento y de 1,200 subió a 1,700.
One of the apartments that just became vacant, raised from, went from.
1,200?
1,200 to 1,700.
De hecho, ayer la manager me dijo que sí, yo me quería mover a un apartamento, que cuando ya estuviera mi apartamento listo, pero con la nueva renta de 1,700.
As a matter of fact, the manager told me that if I wanted to move back into my place, I would have to pay the new fee.
Eso es una injusticia.
That's an injustice.
Porque son 34 unidades y fuimos ocho familias desalojadas.
There's 34 units and it was eight families who are being, who are being evicted.
Y todos fuimos las que tuvimos niños, los que nos están desalojando.
And we all have kids.
Gracias y ojalá nos puedan ayudar en esto, por favor.
Thank you and we hope you can help us with this.
My name is William Herrera and I live, I've lived in Baldwin Park for about three and a half years now. I went through a hard time and my grandmother, who offered some help, a helping hand, I moved in with her and it's just been really difficult for me. We became really close, like best friends, and recently in August, she passed away. And probably the hardest thing I've ever been through these past two months since I've lost her. And now I'm being forced out and I have nowhere to go. And I have doubt, I have tried to discuss future tenancy with the management as they left notices and when I would go approach to try to speak to them, it's just been very like hostile. I don't know what it's going to take, but I've been living in a nightmare for the past two months whilst leaving my late grandmother. I've tried to pay the rent and they don't want to accept it, I'm not sure, I just can't get a straight answer. I'm waiting for some kind of help because I feel like I'm losing it. If you guys can please find it in your heart, doesn't help me, then maybe the next person. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Evening, Mayor Lozano and city council members, my name is Frank Gavner and. And affordable housing is a huge challenge in our state for sure. Homelessness and poverty is really a reflection of how we treat each other, you know, on a day-to-day basis. And so it's encouraging to know that we have so many people trying to resolve the issue in different ways, including, you know, rent freeze. I'm a teacher and so I have students who are homeless. Most of my student families are struggling with affordable housing, even if they have it, they're, you know, month to month, rent to rent. I'll tell you a story of a young lady I met a few years ago and she had three children, a two-year-old, a four-year-old and a five-year-old. And at some point in her rental agreement, the landlord said, "You only can have three in the home." So what would you do? What did she do? I mean, she had three children, she didn't have the money to go find another place that was the same or even big enough for the family. She had a choice of just letting one of the children go, you know, go on her own, maybe try to find, fend for themselves, but you know, two, three and five, not that easy to do, obviously. I don't think this goes far enough. Less than a quarter mile from here, we have a facility that's being built that's evicting children who haven't even had a chance. Killing them before they're evicted. Now, what affordable housing do they have? Talking about Planned Parenthood. I think maybe you should include in the resolution that we want to extend this to respect life.
Yeah, excuse me, we have to stay on the subject because this is a public hearing dedicated to the housing.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. And we're talking about affordable housing. Yeah. But that mother had another child to feed, where would she go? So I'd like you to just consider that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Lozano.
Thank you. Good evening.
Councilmember, my name is Yolanda Sandoval. This is actually my first time speaking. I'm not going to speak in front of people. But I've been listening to all these people talk right here and I understand them. I've been living here for nineteen years. Twice I had to move, once because the rent, where we're living, they moderated the apartments. So they rented, they raised the rent for like, from what we were paying to a thousand more. For those, a lot of people moved from the apartments because they couldn't afford it. Where I'm living right now, it was low, we're paying, we paid from a thousand.
Yes.
But the manager from there, he raises it, he's always raising the rent for everything, anything that, if we need something to fix or anything, he raises the rent. Or we have to pay, a year ago, the sink from the restroom fell. It fell like, probably like a couple of inches, six inches, by my feet. When I called him, he told me, "Oh," he goes, "you're gonna have to pay for it. You could buy one at Home Depot for a hundred and you could put it yourself." Or else, he goes, "I could buy it and I could put it, but if I come and put it," he goes, "I have to charge you a fee and it's gonna be a lot. It's better for you if you put it yourself." For everything that's broken, he always wants to charge us and wants us to pay for it when it's already broken. The house, it's like, it's, the walls, they're all coming apart and everything. He doesn't even live there, he doesn't even go there. He goes there just when everybody wants, when he wants somebody that owes him money or pays him money. I don't know. He says that, we were late on the rent like a couple of years, so like three years ago, he went and told us that we owe him six thousand dollars. When I asked him from late fees, I go, "We don't owe you six thousand dollars?" He said, "Yeah." He goes, "It's from," he gave the paper, he says that it's from like late charges, late charges, and that it all amounted to six thousand. And when I told him, I go, "Why didn't you give it?" I go, "Why didn't you, why did you wait for you as the owner? Why did you wait so long to charge us?" And he goes, he didn't say nothing, he didn't even answer me. And then he goes, "How am I supposed to pay you?" I go, "I really have enough. I don't work due to my seizures." I go, "My, I live with my parents, my dad works, he doesn't make the minimum." He goes, "Oh, well have your older son or your younger son to work." My sixteen years old, I go, "I can't afford to move with them, move him around." Because that is, as it is, when I move him from school, he gets his press.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
It's not right that, it's not right that. They want to charge us for everything, they want to raise the rent for everything and everything, but they don't want to fix nothing from the apartments. And they're not even there.
All right. Thank you, and it's well-known. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Hello, City Council, residents of Baldwin Park. You know, people, listen to me. You people up there don't care because we're paying for your pay.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I'm gonna have to stop you. No, I'm gonna have to stop you.
Shut up.
No, do not tell me to shut up.
Shut up.
Excuse me, sir. This has to be, hold on, hold on.
He's quiet, he's interrupting me.
No, 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 no. It has to stay on a public hearing. Hold on.
Quiet.
See, I'm gonna have to stop and remove you from there.
I'll stay in here for three minutes because nothing else.
I'm gonna have to, excuse me.
You won't.
No, excuse me, this is a public hearing. This is a public hearing.
What are you gonna do? Throw me out like you do everybody else that talks against you?
If you continue your behavior...
You shut up, I said my piece.
Go escort him out, chief, please. Escort him out. I'm not gonna have anyone come up here.
Did I do anything wrong?
That is, that is intent for the running, for you to come here.
Did I do anything wrong?
Escort him out, please. Escort him out.
Don't touch me, I'm not hurting you.
Excuse me, escort him out.
No, I've got three minutes to talk.
Excuse me, no. Stop, stop. You know what? We're gonna go to recess. Let's go to recess. We're gonna recess. Stop. The meeting, go ahead. I'm gonna make a motion to recess until this gentleman is out. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We're gonna wait. Stop.
You can't sit down for three minutes and then say my piece.
You cannot come here and disrupt. You know what? I've already said, he needs to be escorted out. He needs to be escorted out, please.
I have three minutes to talk.
Oh, now this is incredible. That's so wrong. That is so wrong. Let me, first of all, allow me to explain. When a public hearing is focused on a particular subject, it is the subject at hand. If the individual wants to speak totally something different, you're gonna have to go to the regular City Council Public Communication. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware. We're focused here, we are primarily focused today on rent control, not having someone coming in here with personal attacks. And unfortunately, that person has a trend of doing that. All right, thank you.
My name is Fernando Sandoval. I've been living in Baldwin Park for almost fifteen years. I'm a risk, and it can really skyrocket. I started at seven fifty.
Is the speaker on? Sorry about that. I don't know the speaker. Mark, do we have our ITP player? Was David here? David, is it on? Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you hear me?
Yes, there you go, there you go. You know what? Start his time over, start his time over, please. All right. Okay.
Yeah, my name is Fernando Sandoval. I've been living here in Baldwin Park for fifteen years. And the rent increase has been really high-rocked on these fifteen years. I started at seven fifty for two-bedroom apartment. Now it's sixteen hundred dollars. And I used to provide for my family by myself. Now my wife and I, we had to work full-time in order to get the money so we can pay all the basic needs and the rent. So I think it's time for City, because it's been, the rent control has been put on in different cities. And I think the city of Baldwin Park is, needs to get in this thing also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Gloria Valdez. Yo tengo dieciocho años viviendo aquí en Baldwin Park y adoro mi ciudad, quiero mucho a mi ciudad, pero estoy en un lugar en el que... Gloria Valdez.
I'm Gloria Valdez. I've been living in the city for eighteen years and I love my city.
Y estoy en un dilema en el que entré rentando una casita pequeña muy cara.
So my dilemma is that I'm renting a house, a little house, but it's very expensive.
El año pasado me aumentaron la renta. Mi esposo tiene que trabajar desde las cinco de la mañana hasta las diez de la noche.
Last year they raised my rent and now my husband works from five AM till ten PM.
Para poder solventar un poquito los gastos de la renta. A veces tenemos que turnarnos entre si comida, bilis o ropa para los hijos.
So that's to be able to face the needs that we have. And sometimes we have to make the choice between our rent, our bills and food.
Ahora no solo lidiamos con eso, lidiamos con que las personas, me gustaría poner un énfasis en eso, en que no solo lidiamos con el aumento de las rentas, sino con el abuso de las personas que nos rentan. Noté que mis bilis salían demasiado caros y cuando me di cuenta por qué era...
So not only do we have to deal with the high rent, but we also have to deal with really what is the abuse of the people that live in these places. So I noticed that my bills were going up really drastically.
Era porque yo durante cuatro años le pagué la luz, el gas y el agua al hijo que ella tiene viviendo en el garaje.
Because I was paying for the gas, light and water of the son that she was, that is the landlord's son that's living on the property.
Mis hijos eran menores de edad y durante cuatro años ellos me poncharon las llantas de mi carro sin pensar que yo cargaba niños menores de edad y podía tener un accidente.
So for all these years, my children were underage and they would puncture my tires without thinking of the fact that I'd have to be transporting young children.
Y cuando yo les comenté de eso, ellos me dijeron, "Si no te parece, vete."
And when I brought it up to them, they said, "If you don't like it, you can go."
Ahora trabajo yo también para ayudar un poquito a mi esposo en la renta.
So now I work a little, I work as well to try and help a little bit with the rent.
Lo que más me impactó en esto, que fue que me subieran la renta, que de por sí ya era cara, es que mi hija fue al colegio, pero no le pude pagar el colegio a mi hijo.
So what hurts the most is that we're working this hard and my daughter is now college age and I can't pay to send her to college.
Ahora, estoy muy orgullosa de él porque tomó la mejor decisión de irse al Army, pero está muy lejos y lo extraño mucho y solo tenía dieciocho años.
I'm sorry, her son. So her son decided to go to the military and though she is proud, she is extremely sad that he's had to go so far away at just eighteen years old.
Y esto me tiene en una depresión tremenda.
I'm in a deep, tremendous depression.
Pero le pido a Dios que me haga encontrar otro lugar donde por lo menos esté más tranquila y cuando regrese mi hijo, recibilo con los ojos, con las manos abiertas y en un lugar tranquilo y pacífico donde no haya tanto abuso.
So I am just praying every day that when my son comes home, I'm able to receive him with my open arms in a place that is more peaceful and not filled with so much abuse.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias, Dan. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. Mayor, my name is Daniel Ayala. I've been living in Baldwin Park for about twenty-eight years and I got almost eight years that I've been getting the rent, raise the rent every year, a hundred dollars. And this year, the manager raised me a hundred dollars on February and she raised me another a hundred dollars to start on the first of December. I'm a disabled person and it's really hard for me to pay that much, you know, for what I'm getting. And I got my wife, she's a disabled person too. And when I asked the manager why she's raising me so much, she says, "Well, if you can pay, just move." Or, "Because right here, there's no rent control." And we need a rent control, you know, in Baldwin Park because it's really hard for people like me, you know, like people that we can't, you know, afford to pay that much money, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go Bruins.
Buenas noches a todos. Y le doy gracias a Dios por estar aquí con ustedes y poder dar mi testimonio.
Good evening, everyone. I'm thankful to be here. I'm grateful to give my testimony.
Yo tengo dos años viviendo aquí en Baldwin Park porque para mí ha sido muy difícil como madre soltera y por todo lo que he escuchado que no nada más soy yo la única...
I've been living in Baldwin Park two years and it's been very difficult as a single mother and I see now, not just for me, but for everyone else.
Pues no sé si decir que gracias a Dios que estoy sola porque veo que los hijos sufren mucho aquí. Yo los tengo en México, pero de igual manera, yo tengo que trabajar para ellos y me es difícil pagar renta de seiscientos, setecientos, seiscientos cincuenta dólares por un apartamento, un cuartito, sin baño y ahora estoy pagando un garaje.
It pains me to say that maybe I'm better off with my children not being here because I see how much the children suffer. My children are in Mexico, but I still have to send money to them and support them. And it's hard for me to pay for six hundred, seven hundred dollars for just a room, a small room with no bathroom. And now, right now, I'm renting a garage.
Yo le pido de la manera más cordial que si nos puede ayudar también a nosotras las mujeres solas porque yo tengo una amiga que desgraciadamente no me pudo acompañar, estaba corriendo por esta misma situación que la sacaron de su vivienda a ella y a su hija y yo no la pude traer conmigo porque el cuarto está muy pequeño.
So I'm asking for your help, your support with this because I also have a friend who unfortunately couldn't come tonight and she's in the same situation. La están desalojando.
No, ya está.
Oh, they've already evicted her and I couldn't even invite her to come and be with me because my space is so small.
Nosotros hemos buscado, mi amiga y yo, un apartamento, pero desgraciadamente son muy caros y nos están pidiendo talón de cheque, cuenta del banco y muchas otras cosas y todavía nos dicen que si podemos tal vez calificar.
So we're looking for an apartment, but everything is super expensive and they're also looking for a check stub and credit and all of these other things, a bank account that make it really difficult to find those things.
Yo le pido de la manera más atenta que si nos puede usted ayudar, no nada más a mí, no a toda la comunidad. Eso es todo por mi parte, muchas gracias.
Gracias.
With all respect, I ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication. Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Ivandro García. 所以我 residente de Baldwin Park desde hace siete años.
My name is Ivandro García and I've been here for seven years in Baldwin Park.
Tengo que trabajar de seis de la mañana a diez de la noche todos los días.
I work every day from six to ten PM.
Porque todos los años me suben la renta.
Because every year, my rent goes up.
Empecé ahí viviendo con mil cien dólares y hasta ahora estoy pagando casi mil quinientos dólares.
So I started living there and it was eleven hundred dollars and now it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Tengo siete hijos y el mayor está esperando a cumplir dieciséis años para decidir si sigue en la escuela o salirse a trabajar para ayudarme.
I have seven children and my oldest is sixteen and he's deciding right now whether to continue going to school or to drop out to work.
Y pues no creo que sea justo.
And I don't think that's fair.
Tengo que soportar los malos tratos del manager.
I have to put up with the abuse of the manager.
Porque las rentas son muy caras.
Because the rent is so expensive.
Tengo que soportar a mis vecinos que necesitan que mis hijos se callen a las ocho de la noche porque si no se molestan...
I have to put up with my neighbors who want my kids to be quiet at eight PM because if not, that bothers them.
Mis hijos no pueden salir a jugar porque se molestan también.
They can't go out, my kids can't go out and play because that bothers them too.
Entonces tengo que llevar a mis hijos a jugar al parque o a la iglesia en donde trabajo.
So I have to take my kids to the park or maybe the church where I work.
Y la razón es porque todo está muy caro en la renta y no puedo conseguir ahora algo más grande.
And because rents are so high, there's no way that I could go somewhere else to somewhere that's got more room for my family.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Gracias.
Mayor, City Council, okay. The situation right here is the rent control, which is... The situation right here is the rent control, which is, we've been bringing it up off and on, okay? It just helped a family in Avocato Heights that we had to go to Almani, which they have the rent control, okay? That's something that we need to look at. Avocato Heights, which is a nice areas, you know, how come they have rent control and we don't? Right here we're Hispanic working families, okay? We're not making ten thousand dollars a month or whatever, we're paying the outrageous prices that landlords are raising up, okay? I have some friends in front of my house, which our apartments were in the corner, okay? The landlord because code enforcers went in there and told him that he couldn't have a patio converted into a room. So in return he turned around and raised the rent three hundred dollars. That's a lot, okay? But he's supposed to be under section eight, you know, and that's something that we were trying to find out, you know? Because it's too much money, you know? We're working families and that's something that we have to take care of the community. We cannot be, you know, saying, "Oh, whatever, whatever the landlord wants." We have to put a stop to it. That a hundred and eighty days, that's not enough. We should put it up to six months to a year. So people can see what really is happening, so you guys can really investigate what's happening, okay? That's all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that much.
Buenas tardes a todos. My name is Hasani De La Vega and I have been living here in Baldwin Park my whole life, twenty-two years. Mi nombre es Hasani De La Vega y he estado viviendo aquí en Baldwin Park toda mi vida, que han sido veintidós años. My parents have been renters my whole life. Y yo apoyo el congelamiento de la renta. I would be devastated if my family was evicted or couldn't afford housing. Yo estaría completamente devastada si mi familia las estuvieran corriendo, no tuvieran donde vivir. And I can't stomach seeing my neighbors, your constituents, being evicted and/or unable to afford housing. Y no puedo estarme quedada sin hacer nada cuando mis vecinos, la gente que ustedes están representando, los están corriendo de sus casas o no pueden, simplemente no pueden pagar su renta. These rent increases are displacing our families and it's placing profits above the lives of our neighbors. And it hurts me to see our elders having to work when they should be retired because they can't afford the housing for their families. It hurts me to see people sleeping in their car because they were, they can't afford the rent. It hurts me to see families living in overcrowded homes where there's two bedrooms and there's three families living in that house. Housing should be treated as a human right and we are the working class and housing is just simply unaffordable. Your decision will speak volumes of your loyalty and will have real consequences in the lives of our neighbors. Before the election where most of, or all of you were elected, most of you were, had attended a housing forum and all of you voiced your support for rent control. And now is the time to keep your word. I'm asking you to treat my neighbors with dignity, to treat your constituents with dignity. Please, please, this will affect many people. Please support this rent control ordinance. This is our beautiful city and we all deserve the right to housing.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council members. Mario Maciel, former planning commissioner, come to you today. First of all, I'll give you thanks for taking that step to go forward with the rent control ordinance. I've expressed my concerns and problems to you guys before, how my rent went up from me paying sixteen hundred dollars for a three-bedroom house to now paying twenty-two hundred, of which now I've even warned the property manager, if it goes up again, I have no other choice but to vacate the premises. And my thought behind that is, what am I going to do? Where am I going? Because there isn't that much, that many houses for rent here in Baldwin Park. They're being bought out and you guys see it, it's being bought out and this place starting to look like rosemeat and they're kicking us out slowly and surely. Thank you for taking the step of putting something together. I know it doesn't protect us who live in houses but a lot of people behind me are living in apartment complexes and it hurts me to hear how they're being treated, how they're being affected, but I'm not the only one. It's a lot of people behind me that are affected. I'm hoping that you guys can come up with a good resolution. I'm working, I'm willing to work with you guys if you guys need any advice or need any more input as far as the community. I wanted to bring that forward to you guys also and help out in any way that's possible. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you, Mario.
Buenas noches, miembros del Consilio. Ella es Mónica de una cooperativa de intérpretes y que están apoyando esta reunión. Good evening, everyone. I am Beatriz Sandoval and this is Monica who works with LiberaTe, which is an interpreting cooperative to support. Por favor, si pueden contratar a alguien como ella, es muy importante para nuestra comunidad que hable español.
Actually, we may.
If you can contract someone like us, it's a great service to the community. Gracias, mayor, y gracias, miembros del Consilio, por poner esta resolución de control de renta, perdón, de congelamiento de renta temporal. Es muy importante para nuestras familias. Thank you, council and mayor, for going forward with this temporary ordinance. It's really important for the families of Baldwin Park. Creo que es solamente un primer paso aunque nosotros ya hemos tenido una carrera casi de dos años buscando este control de renta en nuestra comunidad. I think it's a first step, for sure, even though it's been twelve years that we've been working on something like this. También quiero agradecer a la representante de la supervisora, Gilda Solís, por estar aquí y algunos otros representantes de la asambleísta Blanca Rubio y me parece que está alguien también de la senadora, Susan Rubio, por estar esta noche aquí. And I'd like to thank the representatives for Supervisor Solís and also Assembly Member Rubio and any other... And Senator Rubio. Yeah. Quiero invitarlos, sé que vamos a tener una estabilización de renta porque lo pude ver en la agenda y pude escucharlo en la otra reunión y creo que han hecho un excelente trabajo en mover esto rápidamente. Le agradezco mucho también a la consejo membra Alejandra, al consejo membra Paulo Hernández, por estas dos importantes resoluciones. So I'd also like to thank Councilmember Avila and Councilmember Hernandez for their work. I know that there's going to be some rent stabilization coming up on the agenda and I know this from looking ahead and also the meetings before, so I'd like to thank you for your work. Y esta noche, perdón, también quiero agradecer a los otros miembros del Consilio, usted también que se reunió con nosotros para escuchar las historias de nuestras familias. Gracias también a la Siri de la Ciudad. So thank you to the rest of the council and also the mayor for listening to us at prior meetings and also to the city. Esta historia no es solamente acerca de mí. Cuando ustedes fueron candidatos al mayor y al concejo pudieron escuchar la historia de mi familia. So the stories here are not just me but I know, because I know that you've already heard my story before. Gracias a Dios y a otro grupo de mi iglesia y al padre Mike de mi iglesia. Nosotros ahora tenemos un lugar estable y seguro donde vivir. So thanks, thank you to God and to Father Mike and other members of my church, we now have a stable place to live. Pero las consecuencias de haber vivido ocho meses sin un lugar, una hogar, han tenido, ha habido consecuencias que van a quedarse en nuestra vida por mucho tiempo. But the consequences of living, of being homeless for eight months, we're still feeling them and they're still something that we're going to carry with us for a long time. Mis hijas y yo, obviamente que también mi esposo, tenemos problemas de salud mental. My daughters and I and obviously my husband as well all have mental health issues. Porque no podemos lidiar con la ansiedad que cada mes estamos lidiando con el incremento de la renta y el incremento de todos los bilis que vienen a consecuencia de ese trauma que tuvimos. Because every month we're dealing with the anxiety that's caused from what we've gone through and also the rising cost of bills and rent that we're always facing. Mis hijas han tenido que estar tomando tratamiento psicológico, sus terapias, para poder lidiar con eso aún siendo ellas unas estudiantes en UC Riverside. So even though my daughters are students at UC Riverside, they're currently in therapy dealing with the trauma. Mi esposo mencionó Fernando Sandoval, que nosotros tenemos dos full times, uno él y uno yo. Lo quiero corregir. Nosotros tenemos un negocio y tenemos un trabajo, yo un part-time yo y mi esposo tiene dos trabajos. My husband Fernando Sandoval said that we have two full-time jobs but I want to correct him, we actually have a business and then I also work a part-time job and he works another part-time job on top of that. So esta es la situación de cada una de las familias que estamos aquí, representando el dolor de otras familias también. And that's the pain that the families that are here are experiencing and they're also here representing the pain of families that aren't here. Victoria tuvo que moverse, teniendo ella setenta y dos años, viviendo en su camioneta por seis años, tuvo que moverse a Long Beach porque no había un lugar que ella pudiera pagar en Baldwin Park. Victoria was sixty-two, living in her car and she had to move to Long Beach because there wasn't even a place for her to be here. En cada domingo ella viaja desde Long Beach aquí para venir a su iglesia, a esta comunidad donde pertenece su corazón, porque ella vivió toda su vida en Baldwin Park. And she travels every Sunday from Long Beach to Baldwin Park to go to church because this is where her heart is and this is her community. No queremos que la historia de Beatriz ni la historia de Victoria quede, se refleje en otras familias, necesitamos hacer cambios y gracias. Estamos dispuestos a reunirnos con usted, concejal, a Paul Hernández para seguir trabajando en esa importante moción. And we don't want Victoria and Beatriz's stories to reflect on other families, so we'd like to work with you to make this happen.
Thank you. Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel Estrada and I am a resident of Baldwin Park. Mayor, city council, we currently live in a country where forty percent of Americans can't afford a four-hundred-dollar emergency. According to the Census Bureau, we also live in a city in which fifteen percent of the population living in poverty are living below the poverty line, a number higher than the national average. The general inability to afford housing affects us all, directly and indirectly. Rising housing costs are forcing families to choose between housing and other vital necessities. The district's student count is dropping, children are constantly moving and are unable to have a stable education. As more money goes to rent, there's less money for healthier meals and copays for medical care. Unaffordable housing has even become an obstacle for victims of domestic violence, increasing their chances of homelessness, and if they end up on the streets, they are prone to mental, physical, and sexual abuse. An increase in rent is an increase in the amount of money that leaves the local economy, hurting local businesses and services. There is no real evidence that suggests that rent control could harm development or property value, which is why we need a strong and viable ordinance, not a symbolic one. I would suggest relocation fees be high to deter landlords from paying a small fine to gouge the next family that would move in. And I would also ask that the council reconsider expanding just cause, just cause evictions to homes as those families that live there are also a part of our community and deserve it just reason and attempt to remove them from their home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, more law with public communication? Thank you. Father Mike.
Father Mike Derasa, Pastor St. John the Baptist and my former life, former housing commissioner of the City of Santa Monica. So I come with a lot of understanding of this issue for years, but I, you know, I'm not going to talk about that, I'm going to talk about being bold. You know, Culver City was bold, Inglewood was bold, Alhambra this morning was bold, South Pasadena is bold. There are cities, and thank you to our wonderful supervisor who I think set the direction on recently and also tonight. This is an opportunity to be bold and I, and I think it's in you, all of you, to be bold tonight. You've heard the stories, you've heard the situation at hand and I just really pray and hope that you will make some bold steps to really heal the pains of a lot of people here. I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty, anyone else wishing to speak on their public communication, public hearing, excuse me? Okay, so if not, at this point I will move over to anyone that's opposed. Okay, see no interest in opposing the rent, the proposed rent freeze. At this point, I will now officially close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, the council member, council member, Alejandra Avila.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody that came up here to speak. Muchas gracias a todos los que vinieron aquí a hablar y contar sus historias. I also wanted to thank Edith with the Office of Gilda Solís, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come here and talk to us and for setting the platform in ensuring that the district, your district, has passed the ordinance to help the tenants deal with these rent increases. As the city, I'm looking forward to do the same and work on a comprehensive plan that will help our residents. I also want to thank LA Voice and everyone for advocating, and also I also want to thank, I'm so sorry, LA Voice and everyone in for advocating for this, for the people of Baldwin Park. I know you guys have been active in a lot of cities and I see the activation here. I see the people being active and informing everybody of your rights. So I appreciate you coming out and I appreciate you talking to us and giving you, giving us your stories. As you know, the state of California has seen a rise in rents. This has caused an increased number of tenants having to live paycheck by paycheck. How many of you do that here now? Exactly. Without any hope for ever getting ahead, when we live paycheck by check, it feels like there's no end to our road. Unfortunately for some of these people, that has led them to be homeless. And I have seen this homeless, I have talked to them, because they're not able to afford a house or an apartment or even a one-bedroom to live in. They're left to live out on the streets. I'm asking and I have been asking to put an ordinance in place for rent control and at one point I was told this cannot be done. But of course, I did my research and found out that it can be done. The Office of Gilda Solís is one example that it can be done. With everybody working together, things can be moved in our community. Right now is especially important moment to put a rent freeze because we are coming to the holidays and we all know how difficult the holidays are. A lot of people have been displaced during the holidays, making it even worse. I have worked for the school district for twenty-six years and I have seen firsthand the impact on the outrageous rent increases and that have left families homeless. I've had families come to me telling me that they're living in their car because they have nowhere to live because the rent was increased and they cannot afford it. Fortunately, our Parks and Recreation does have some vouchers to help the families stay in a hotel for maybe a night, two, maximum three nights, but that's definitely not enough. The thought that children and their parents have nowhere to stay completely breaks my heart because I work with these families, I work with these children. So therefore, this is very personal to me. Many of us have no idea and I hope and pray that we never experience this. However, we must not forget those that are experiencing this. My hope is that by putting an ordinance in place, less people will have to be put in this situation. I have also done home visits at hotels where families of five family members, six family members live in one room. Can you imagine, you're a mom and a dad with your four children in one room? Yet we expect our children to thrive in school. How is that even possible? And the parents are supposed to... And the parents are supposed to stay positive when they see no end. They barely have enough money to pay the rent for the hotel. It gets expensive to eat out because they have nowhere to cook. That is so unfair. That is not right. I have also been working with Baldwin Park School Police, not Baldwin Park School Police, I'm so sorry, the city police from Baldwin Park, Amani, Asusa, and Monrovia. I've been doing homeless outreach. Boy, did I have a rude awakening. I have been walking under the washes, giving the homeless information. Giving them outreach information are where they, where they can get services. I have talked to couples, elderly people, veterans, people from all walks of lives, people that were nurses, they had careers, they have masters, but yet, something devastating happened in their lives and now they're living under a bridge or a makeshift tent. Heartbreaking again. Nobody deserves to live this way. Nobody deserves to live on the street. They make this place their home, living under the bridge. I talked to people that hold a job, an eight-hour job like us, a minimum wage, yet, it's not enough to pay the rent, but they make the best of it. They do everything they have to do, like if it was a home. They do their laundry, they cook on a fire, they move forward, but they get discouraged. But with our help, we're not gonna let them give up. We're gonna move to continue to help them. Right now, by starting the rent freeze, the next step will be to start building affordable housing. It is heartbreaking, like I said, to see these families that have been forced to live under the bridges, in their cars, and we just don't understand them. They're not there by choice. Maybe some of them are by choice, a lot of them are not, and let's always remember that. Let's remember that every human being has a right to a nice warm house, a nice hot meal. Let's not forget that it can happen to any one of us. I sure wouldn't like it to continue happening here in Baldwin Park. We need to do everything possible to start off with the rent freeze so that we can work on a comprehensive rent control, which we have already started. And like I said, at first I was told it couldn't be done and now I see that my colleagues are all working for the same goal. We are very excited and with this, I wanna say that I wanna make a motion. Mayor, council members, and community members, I wanna make a motion to put in 180-day rent freeze in the City of Baldwin Park so that city council, staff, and residents work on a comprehensive rent stabilization ordinance so that the tenants as well as the landlords benefit from it. Mayor and councils, I would like to make a motion again for ordinance 1444 of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, regulating rent increases in the City of Baldwin Park and evictions. Thank you.
Okay, so there's second. Any objections? If not, at this point the mo-
I'm sorry?
Yes, go ahead.
I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
Before we take a vote, I just wanted to say a few words.
Yes.
Thank you again, Councilmember Avila, for, you know, introducing this rent freeze. As stated, this goes hand in hand with the draft ordinance that we discussed and that we worked with staff earlier that will be on discussion for us in about two weeks approximately. So we certainly look for, you know, feedback from individuals, you know, through that process at the next, at the next time. What we're looking to do, or at least I can say for myself, what I'm looking to do is to, you know, I've heard the stories. My family has experienced some of these stories many, many years ago. So I understand what it means to, you know, essentially, you know, have choices, right? So that's why it's very important to me, and it's also taken me quite some time to do my due diligence and research as to what is really impacting our community. You know, thank you for LA Voice and your membership and Beatriz and others that I've had the opportunity to speak with in the past and so forth. This is, this issue of rent stabilization is not new to me. It is something that, you know, as mentioned earlier, it was something that was discussed and, you know, I attended the, you know, Housing Forum when we were running for city council. And I made my commitment then, as I say today, that I was in support of rent stabilization ordinance. Now, what that looks like, you know, at the end, will be determined in a few weeks or in a few months here. So I ask you to, you know, take the time to look at that. The draft will be at least available online at a certain period of time here soon, when it's noticed. So I do ask you to look at that because what that provides for each and every one of us, it provides protection for our tenants. It provides comprehensive, you know, overview, but more importantly, it provides some teeth. So in case the stories that we've heard today, you have somewhere to come. You have the city and the city staff will have the legislative piece and the body and the ammunition to go after landlords. But it also entices and provides landlords to invest in their properties, to, you know, make common improvements that benefit each and every one of us that live in these, that live in these apartments. So again, it's a full circle, comprehensive draft, again, just draft ordinance that we discussed earlier today at our 5:30 meeting. And it's something that, again, provides some protection to our, to our tenants and, and again, reduces some of the homelessness in our community. Because as we all know, is, right now, there's nothing in our city that or provides any type of legislative piece for us to really do anything around these things. So with that, you know, I favor that. You know, the one thing I would ask is a friendly amendment. If we could just exclude the single-family homes pre-1995 along with the condos and townhomes, so we are in line with what's happening at the state level. That would be my only motion, you know, my amendment as a friendly one for the rent freeze.
Mayor, I just wanted to say a few comments and then before we continue, if you could hold your-
Absolutely.
Motion. First, I just also wanted to thank all the, first of all, all the community that came out, all the families that are out there, I know, struggling with this huge issue, this crisis of homelessness, the rent that's going out through our community. I wanna thank all the leaders that came out, all the elected officials who sent their representatives here from Hilda Solis's office, our assembly members, both Rubio's and the Assembly of State standing who sent out their reps. And from our faith-based community, I know Pastor Jackson, Father Mike, and all those that came out here to support this ordinance that we have today. And I know that throughout the past few months, all of us, all council members have been approached by different nonprofits, the non, the church organizations, individuals talking to us about the issues of rent going up so high, so skyrocket. You know, I talked to Maria, one of our former commissioners, the issue that he had when they were raising the rent on his home. I talked to Beatriz and her husband, she talked to me about the issues and not only she was facing, but all the other families and how important it is for us to begin to take a look at putting in rent, some type of rent control, that we could look at it. And so with that, throughout the past couple of weeks, I know all council members sat down and we started to formulate how to approach this rent control that's happening, this rent, this homeless crisis and the crisis of rent just going to skyrocket. You know, people telling me that from paying $1,500, the next, they're being told, hey, you gotta pay $2,000 and they were just, you know, a mom and a dad just barely making it and all of a sudden they just got this tremendous rent increase that's going out there. And as everybody stated here, that, that impacts the children because if you gotta move, then that means they gotta get out of school and start over in another school. It, it impacts all the, the young adults that are going to college, our senior citizens. It just impacts everybody. So we're all sitting down here trying to work with the community, wanna listen to all of you to see, you know, this ordinance that we're putting out today, this urgency ordinance plus the one that Councilman Paul Hernandez was working on. You know, we need feedback. We need, we need you to email us or call us and tell us, what do you think about what we're putting out there as ordinances and how we could make it more effective, you know, for the whole community. So we wanna, we wanna make it that it works for everybody, that it's not just something from the council members, but it's from the community. And just, you know, calling us up individually or sending us an email about what you think on the approach that we're taking, I think, is a, a very important and inclusive way to find a solution to the issues that we're facing here today. So just working together, I think we can continue to, to make some progress and to kinda resolve these issues that are, that are impacting all of us and be able to craft an ordinance with the right rent control that, that we all, that's gonna benefit the whole community. So with that, you know, continuing to work with my council colleagues, work with all the community to make sure that we're, we're going forward with that. I just wanted to say rapidly that I have spoken to the community, many people have spoken to me, from different churches, from different organizations, from LA Voice, to express what is happening with the rents that are going up so much. And I'm working with my city council colleagues to try to make an ordinance that works for everyone. We want to hear and listen to you, not just this, but send us an email or call us by telephone to hear more ideas on how we can make an ordinance that is more effective. Alright, with that, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor. I gotta see you.
Thank you. I just wanna recognize all of you for your advocacy, each and every one of you along with the organizations that are here tonight and that have been part of the conversations for a few years now. I also want to thank you for coming forward and sharing your personal stories, your very personal stories. And I know that it takes a lot of courage, especially for those of you who are just speaking for the first time tonight. So I wanna acknowledge that. And I also, you know, I'm glad to see that we are moving forward here on the city council and being responsive to the needs of our community. I think that, you know, this is one, this is one policy that demonstrates, you know, how we've been working together and just trying to figure out some of the challenges in our community and finding solutions that work for our community and, you know, the various stakeholders. I also wanted to acknowledge those of you who have shared that your children are going on to college and going on to the army and, and just persevering, you know, because I think that that's very inspiring and, you know, I just wanna give you all kudos for, for your children that have, are moving forward and persevering and, and just, you know, that is the, very much the spirit of our community, perseverance. So thank you so much for sharing. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you very much. At this point, alright, there was a motion on the floor by-
Mayor?
So can you explain your amendment? I know there was an amendment made. I'm sorry, councilman.
I was next. So I know he wanted to make an amendment not to include the houses. However, I feel it's important to leave it as is, to include everything for right now. It's a temporary freeze. We have to work on the comprehensive plan that will work for the rest of our community. Right now, we need this temporary freeze. Remember, we have the holidays coming up. We cannot afford another family to be displaced. We hurt nothing or anyone by keeping the freeze as is. Temporary means it's not going to last forever. We will put something in place. We know there's a law that says any homes built after 1995 are not eligible. However, right now, this freeze, I would like to stand as is to protect everybody, especially around the holidays. Thank you.
Mayor, I just have a-
Yes, go ahead.
A question for our, for our legal staff. As I read this ordinance, what does it include? Is it the way it sits now? It includes all residential apartment units, anybody that rents housing? Is that inclusive of them, that they will be under this rent freeze? And if you could also explain, what is the issue with, you guys set up a year, 1995, that those homes wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed to have a rent freeze? I mean, I don't understand that, but if you could explain it.
Yeah, we have, legal counsel?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Regarding the 1995, that was established in state law under the Contra-Hawkins Rental Housing Act. That excludes all single-family homes built after 1995. So that is state law that prohibits rent control for single-family homes built after 1995.
Not before.
Excuse me, yeah.
Yeah.
Before.
Okay, so after 1995, if the house was built after 1995, we cannot impose a rent freeze on that or rent control? Is that what you're saying?
No, that is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is correct.
After.
After 1995. And the reasoning behind that is, for homes that are built before 1995, theoretically, the homeowners have already recouped a large portion of their investment because it was built before 1995 and they've been having their rents for 20-something years. For those homes that are built after 1995, those homeowners are still trying to recoup their investment. It's a very new, relatively new investment. So the legislative history of the Contra-Hawkins Rental Housing Act talks about those reasonings and that's why the 1995 demarcation was made. As a, did that answer that question?
Did that question, and then, and then the other one?
Going on to your second question of what units are covered by this ordinance. This ordinance was written to cover all units in the City of Baldwin Park.
Would that cover something like the Rome Project, those homes?
It would, as currently, as currently written.
Okay, and this also goes retro to what date?
September 4th.
To September 4th.
Retro to September 4th, 2019, which is when the first time it was mentioned here on the dais.
Officially mentioned.
Officially mentioned here on the dais.
Okay, so if I lived in the Rome Project and I got a four increases and the last two would be after the September date, what would happen? They could not raise my rent at that point?
They have to change it back.
What would happen is-
I will.
They would have to go back to the original rent that was in place on September 4, 2019.
Why September 4th? Can we go back a little further? Can I change it to say, I don't know, sooner than that?
And that's a very good question because I had brought it up, as a matter of fact, earlier when I, when I just got elected. So that is a good question for the attorney because it has been brought up. The community has brought it up in previous meetings prior to September 4th, so.
Yes, you can make it retroactive to an earlier date. I would only say this, that some cities that have had the retroactive component have been sued based on that. I believe the shorter, shorter amount of time that you make it retroactive, the less likely that you're going to be sued on that. And the reason I put the September 4th date is that was the request from Councilmember Avila.
I think you better stick to September.
Yeah, let's just-
Alright, at this point, Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Again, the clarification for while I'm asking is for the single family is because, again, is the state law. One of the other things is, you know, in this draft rent freeze is it doesn't exclude, you know, such as Section 8 or other federal housing that has their own increases set by, you know, by the government. So I wanna make sure that we're not overreaching through this process. So again, my motion, you know, my friendly amendment is to include single-family homes and condos and townhomes pre-1995, as stated in current law, as our attorney mentioned. And it also aligns with, you know, the, I believe it's the Tenant Protection Act that the governor just signed also. So there are two, basically, essentially, there's gonna be three laws that will be, that needs to be addressed by our community and more importantly, property owners. So to lessen any confusion, it makes sense to do that because otherwise, our staff and other people are gonna be receiving way too many calls to be able to clarify these type of things.
Yeah, let me have a legal counsel. Thank you for those good points. Legal counsel.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Okay. On the clarification of Councilmember Paul Hernandez's.
Oh, no, that is, that is correct. Both points that were made are correct. And that is, there are state requirements that would regulate some of the affordable housing and so forth. And then on the other side of that is, you know, those, those units should not be raised above certain amounts anyway. So that, that protection should also be in place as well, which was a point- a point made.
Mayor?
Okay, yes, Vice Mayor, Monica Garcia.
I think that what is before us here in this urgency ordinance, number 1444, has been well thought out, it's been reviewed by our attorney, it's been vetted, you know, I think through, based on state law and what we can do right now. It's not to say that this is where we end...
Right.
...this conversation, and so just for the sake of being productive and moving forward, I would like to go ahead and second that motion with the amendment or, you know, support that amendment to the motion and move this forward at this point in time, and it doesn't prevent us from developing it further.
Well, okay, but the amendment prohibits, there's a need to freeze. We can't freeze before, okay, so are you saying that if it's built before 1995?
Correct.
Those guys will be impacted by the freeze?
What I'm...
Per state law.
Hello? Per state law, what I'm saying is to exclude single-family homes pre-1995 and condos, at the very least.
Okay, pre-1995.
For this current freeze.
Pre or post?
Pre.
Because you made three requests in your motion. One was...
Okay, so...
Hold on, hold on.
Just residents?
Go ahead, make the motion so that we're...
It's post. Post, sorry.
So the ordinance is very simple. It includes everything and includes homes before 1995. Again, it's a rent freeze only for everything, including those homes before 1995. It will not affect anything. We will work on the ordinance...
I'm sorry.
...to do the rent control.
A lot of speaking and camaraderie.
We will work on the ordinance to do the rent control. We're not doing anything that is against the law. The attorney has done his research, and that is why he has written the ordinance the way it is. So that is my motion, to keep the ordinance the way it is, so that we, again, protect everybody at this point, so that we can move forward with the rent control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Again, there was a friendly amendment that I made to exclude the single-family homes from 1995. That is my motion, and I believe...
There was a second, okay, at this point, any objections?
Objection.
Okay, one objection, so, I mean, we're all going to eventually...
I just want to make sure we're all...
Yeah, we're all eventually going to join up, just to let everyone know.
But hold on, let's just make sure we're clear on what we're saying here.
Okay, go ahead.
We're saying that we have to change this ordinance because the state law requires any home after 1995 to condominiums and residences?
I just said, single-family homes and condos. After 1995.
Per the state law.
Per the state law.
Correct. Is that correct, Robert?
That is correct. I would like to clarify the record to make sure that the actual language that you're suggesting and where it's going to be in here, because if you're going to pass this, it has to...
So I would put that under Section 128.03 at the end?
Yes, I was, exactly, I was suggesting that after March 2, 2020, your motion would say excluding single-family homes and condos built after 1995, and then you'd also have to add that to 12804, the eviction part of it as well.
Correct.
We're including before 1995.
Built after 1995 is the friendly amendment, motion.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to go back to the motion that was seconded. At this point, any objections?
Now that he's clarified it, because it was...
We're going to all, we're going to end up working together. All right, so at this point, at this point...
Thank you, Councilmember.
At this point, no objections, so the motion passes. All right, thank you very much, yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I read, can I read the second part into the record under 12804, just so the record is clear? And so the amendment would add to the current ordinance after... Yes, after that, all landlords. So the second sentence in Section 12804. So it should say, "The city of Baldwin Park hereby requires for the next 180 days, September 4 to March 2, 2020, that all landlords excluding single-family homes and condos built after 1995 to have just cause." And so that's where it will now read, and that's the motion you're now voting on and passing.
All right, so at this point, we're going to move on. All right, I just want to, very quick, just say, I want to thank all the individuals that participated today, Alejandro, Alejandro Avila, also Councilmember Alejandro Avila and Councilmember Paul Hernandez, and of course, we're all working together, so we'll give credit to the Vice Mayor, Monica Garcia, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. You know, when we look at everything and we look at Baldwin Park, I've been a resident since 1979, and I moved in Baldwin Park when the homes were still selling in the upper 50s, 60s, and 70s, and 100. And of course, we live in a state that's extremely expensive, we know that. In Southern California, I mean, we've literally priced ourselves out. Now, a lot of people make fun of Baldwin Park or negative things about Baldwin Park. You know what? I've always said, if you don't like Baldwin Park, adios, go somewhere else. My whole thing is, this is a good community, and each, every one of you that are here, you believe in Baldwin Park. That's why it's important for us to make certain that we continue with this particular ordinances, because the people like yourself that are hardworking are the ones that provide the economy for the city of Baldwin Park, and it's important for us to know that. And of course, it's not just Baldwin Park, it's throughout the whole state. Now, there's a lot of residents that have moved on to Riverside, to San Bernardino, even further out towards Indio, because it's affordability, and we understand that. And I think this is, this is the beginning, this is the beginning for the city of Baldwin Park, because we obviously need to reach out to everyone. But at the same time, we also need to be focused upon the people that own homes, which is a major portion in the city of Baldwin Park. Several weeks back, and I know I shared it with Beatrice, the older lady in her mid-80s, who's been in Baldwin Park for many, many years, has two duplexes, and for some odd reason, she thought we passed the rent control, and she was worried because she gets, lives off her social security and those three duplex, the two, excuse me, duplexes that she has, can't even say the word. So it's important for us to be able to make sure that we hear you and we also hear the homeowners as well, because it's important for us to make sure that we join together and work together to be able to resolve the problems. Now, do I believe that we resolve and make everyone happy in the city of Baldwin Park? That's impossible. I mean, as a mayor, I can't make everyone happy, it's just, you know, that's just the way we all work. But today is a good example of us working together, but we need to make sure that we spread it out. There are 75,000 residents in the city of Baldwin Park, and I want to make sure that this is also included in the city newsletter, so that the residents know the steps that we have taken forth, and what are the goals and what are the objectives. And as we know, January 1st, the governor's rent, what is it, the rent increase, a certain percentage that will be passed, but we need to look beyond that. And of course, in Baldwin Park, we're special, and yes, we may be a city of 75,000, but the camaraderie and the family unity that we all have plays a very important part in Baldwin Park, and I hear each and every one of us. So I want to thank you on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park, and let me just end by saying si se puede. Gracias.
Mayor, can I add one more thing, please? Can I add something before you do that? Again, I want to thank LA Voice and everyone in for advocating, and Father Mike and all of the churches and the community. This is not something that your council members have done. This is something that you have moved, you started it all, you brought your community together, and this is what it takes, like the mayor says. It takes a community, and together, we can do a lot. So I am proud to say that as a council, we are working together, and we will continue to work with you to make Baldwin Park better, better for everyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You know, just let me, at this point...
Mayor, just one last, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Come on, you guys, let's try and get out here before 11:30, but go ahead.
Hold on, I just, real quick, I just, just to note, you know, to recap, that this is just the beginning. This is an urgency ordinance, 180 days. We have another ordinance going to be presented by Paul Hernandez that talks more about rent control. It goes on the agenda a week before the actual meeting, so everyone needs to read it, so that we have a public input. All of you can talk to us about if that ordinance makes sense to the community before it gets actually implemented. An ordinance takes two readings, which is almost, what, a month? Maybe 30 days, 60 days before it's implemented? So just to kind of give you a quick background of how the ordinance works, but we still need input from all of you when this next ordinance comes out. 180 days is for all of us to work together to make these ordinances make sense for it before it actually takes place, right? Thank you.
Thank you, gracias. All right, this point, I just need to read this for the record, which is the urgency ordinance, number 1444, and ordinance, excuse me, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park, regulating rent increases and evictions. So at that point, that is read for the record. All right, thank you very much. At this point, I will go ahead and open up the public communication, so anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Hello, how are you?
Hi, my name is Yolanda Espinoza, I live in Baldwin Park. It's my first time, sorry.
Okay.
And the reason why I'm here is because I'm part of the policy council for the school district, and my daughter goes to Getty School, and there's no crosswalk, and it's a new school that they did at Getty's, and I already went to the school board, and they refer me with the city. I already went to another school board, I already went to the police, basically, they sent me, that's why I'm here, and it's very unsafe to, for the children to walk, they between two, three, and four years old, it's a head start, and the street that I'm talking about is on Filling, you know, on the other side of Getty's.
Yes, my good...
And I guess there's no, the only crosswalk is in Cavett in Los Angeles, and where the head start school is located, is like at the middle, and the street is very narrow, and like I said, there's no crosswalk for the children. Us, as parents, you know, when it's in the morning, we park on both sides of the street, you can imagine, the street is very narrow and full of cars, then the school bus drops the kids for North Park, and it's like, you know, I even took pictures and videos, you know, and it's just, I even called the city, but they, you know, they told me that it takes a long time, they told me to come here, but it's just very unsafe for all the parents to be taking their kids to school every day. So I ask for you guys to help me do a crosswalk.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sam Gutierrez will help you, and we'll go out there and assess this. We'll get your number right over here. Gracias.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, thank you, Mario.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Just two other items on the agenda that I saw tonight, for tonight. Item number eight, resolution to approve the purchase of real property located at 14824 Ramona Boulevard. If I'm not mistaken, that's the property that has the barber shop on it currently?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then the other one is the number nine, agenda item number nine, where you're purchasing 14801 Badillo Street, which I believe it's a property that we had already sold to Brandywine, if I'm not mistaken, when I was planning commissioner, where they actually put 23 homes in that facility, which included the red building. So my concern here is, why is it that we're buying back a property that has already been sold and we actually lost money on? I brought to you guys somebody that was willing to buy it at 1.2 million, you guys sold it to Brandywine, and because they couldn't put 28 homes, they knocked the price down to, what, $880,000? And now, we're going to buy back the red building only for 450? That means they've only paid for that almost acre of a lot, 400 and some odd thousand I don't see the logic behind this. I really don't. I don't see, I don't see why is it that we would have to buy back this property? And then also the other property that only has, it's a vacant lot with a small barber shop on it, which if I'm not mistaken, I think the current owner for that is Royal Coaches or the owner of Royal Coaches. That was my concern, I just wanted thoughts on why is it that we're purchasing these properties? I won't be able to stay tonight to hear the entire meeting, but I would like some kind of justification for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mario. Move on with public communication. At this point, oh, go ahead.
I can give and don't say, thank you so much for your job, and I'm looking forward what we do, and thank you for everything this night, to listen to people, hear their stories, and be compassionate with them, and also, thank you, Councilmember Monica, to talk about the first-time speakers here, it's hard for them, it's hard for me also. Thank you so much for all, give these people the trust to, they can come here and spoke about their concerns, and I'm looking forward, working with you to make Baldwin Park a better, better, better city than today, as today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Moving along with public communication.
Would I have a translator, please?
Sure.
Señorita.
Are you translating, are you translating right here? Here we go. Are you going to translate?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I'm not talking Spanish, you talk in English, okay? Okay. Primer cosa, buenas noches para todos. La primer cosa quiero saber quién fue la orden...
First thing, he wants to know who gave the order for...
To mover los carteles que estaban en la Puente en Pacific, donde decía que fueran los, no sé si ustedes son veteranos, pero era una, un sign para los veteranos. Era un orgullo pasar por allí, había otra gente de West Covina, la Puente, Basset, y todos, y todos decían, oye, ¿podemos agarrar un signacina?
He wants to know why the signs on the corner of Puente and Pacific were taken down. I think they were showing veterans from our town, and he said it was a great pride to see them in Basset and other cities like West Covina, so...
Ya dejamos eso, ¿verdad? Quiero preguntar por qué tenemos el abogado que tenemos aquí. Estuvimos investigando un caso que hizo él en Los Ángeles, el caso, el número de fue B C 597293, okay? En eso gastó casi 55 mil dólares y perdió todo.
And he's asking about a specific case that the city attorney worked on, and the case number is B is in Boy, C 397293, where he alleges that all the money was lost for the plaintiff.
Y a lo contrario, trajo un doctor que no era doctor, que si lo están investigando ahorita, el caso con el Bar Association.
So he's saying that allegedly, the city attorney is currently under investigation by the LA County Bar Association.
Pero eso es bastante. Ahora quiero preguntar la Rose Tang, que está ganando 220 mil dólares, okay? Y el Shannon, 305 mil dólares, por estar aquí, ni el gobernador de California. Garra eso, ellos ganan 200, 200 mil dólares.
Rose Tang. Yeah. And he also would just like to point out that Rose Tang makes $220,000, and Shannon makes $305,000, $100,000, while the governor... Shannon makes 305,000, 100,000 dollars, while the governor of California makes less.
Quiero saber de dónde están sacando el dinero para poder pagar tanto, cuando la comunidad está peleando por muchas cosas, y ustedes no están haciendo nada.
The question is, where is the money coming from while the community is struggling, as we've seen, and you guys aren't, there's no action being taken?
También supimos que van a agarrar un manager, un manager, para mirar lo que están haciendo de departamento a departamento, agarrando dinero de un departamento a otro.
That you're hiring a new oversight manager to see how the money is moving between departments.
Una de las cosas que hemos mirado y hemos investigado, comenzando con usted, señor Lozano, no sé si pagó ya los, el dinero que debe a la ciudad, por la propiedad de su papá. Y otra cosa es que ahí parece carla, el jorinforso no va allá y le da un ticket.
Yeah, so the question just is if Mayor Lozano has paid the money owed to the city from a property that previously belonged to his father.
Queremos saber si ya está pagado, está bien, si no está pagado, una persona que ya falleció no puede tener la propiedad.
Due to the previous owner of the property being deceased, cannot be legally in that person's name, and he's just asking whether or not it's been paid, and what the, what the deal is there.
Only got 30 seconds, it's okay.
So esto lo queremos saber, porque todo lo que le traemos, tenemos la pruebas, todo el tiempo llega, usted, señor Lozano, y lo dice que somos mentirosos. Pero ya fijase usted en el espejo, y a quién le está creciendo la nariz a usted.
So I think he just wants some responses to the, to the questions, and, you know, if, where's the money coming from?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you very much. This is what he does, I want everyone to see, every time, just stay, so that you're able to... As a matter of fact, first, let me just start, hold on, stop, stop, stop. First of all, number one, you have documents, submit them right here, so we could all review them. Let me talk about my dad's property. You obviously don't know much about real estate, you don't know much about, about transitions that go on. I have seven brothers and sisters that live throughout the county. Yes, I have a brother that's residing in that particular home. I have no control over my brother, okay? What you, what, the record, it's public record on the property. My name is not on that property. You could come here and make up whatever you want, that's totally up to you, that's totally up to you. But I'll tell you right now, you will not find my name on there. I have my personal properties that there's no, that you won't find anything on there, regardless, but that's the policy. Secondly, let me, hold on, secondly, let me make sure, this attorney here does not belong to that, that particular organization that you just mentioned, and it's, again, I don't know where you're getting these facts, but again, next week, or the week thereafter, bring, submit the documents here. He does not make 300, hold on, no, you cannot speak no more, please. Does not make 300,000. Rose Tang does not make 200,000. I mean, this is incredible, but again, just to let everyone know, and I'll say it in Spanish. La constitución, constitución de este gran país permite que cualquier persona, como la que está aquí ahorita presente, puede fabricar información, fabricar información, y la constitución lo protege a esa persona. Y es lo que, él está, lo que está haciendo puede ser, nosotros como políticos no lo podemos demandar, simplemente yo como alcalde tengo que reclamar, recladarle a esta persona lo que está, lo que está diciendo. Es afortunadamente información falsa, es lo que es. So I just wanna let everyone know, of course, the, the constitution of this country is beautiful. Now, what's unique about this constitution is it allows anyone to come up to this, to this lectern and say, make up whatever story you want, and no one, no one up here on this dais has a right to be able to sue this person. And of course, social media nowadays, I mean, on social media, everyone on social media, make up all kinds of different stories, that's just the reality of what it is. Now today, I will compliment you, I will compliment that you stayed and heard me out. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, so at this point, at this point, we're gonna go ahead and move...
Mayor, let me take a moment, since we've been fielding requests from the community. I do want to, because I dropped the ball with Ms. Magdalena Fresnillo, and we, she had asked me to have our city look into the street, the traffic lights at Francisco and Puente, and more specifically, if we could look at any left-hand, you know, the protected left turns, and see, you know, the timing of them, and also to see if there are any that are absent, to see if they're warranted for that intersection, because it is a very busy intersection. So could you look into that for us? All right, thanks.
All right. Oh, did you wanna say? Okay, come on up, come on up, sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Lily Maciel, and I am in opposed to item number 14. This is an amendment to move from 50 feet to 25 feet to allow indulgent, something regarding to cannabis, and I don't agree with this, because this is selling cannabis, and I thought we were not supposed to be selling. What is it?
Once you finish, I'll, I'll make the comments.
Okay, go ahead. I'm in opposed to this, because how are you gonna change this from 50 feet to 25 feet to a residence? This is for a residence. How are you gonna allow cannabis to be so close to a residence? 50 feet's already enough.
All righty, okay, once the public communication ends, then I'll go ahead and make the comment. Did you wanna say something? Yes, come on up, come on up.
I don't wanna take any more of your time, but I just wanted to ask you a few questions in regards to the Rome project. Is it city-owned, or is it owned by the restaurant downstairs?
You know what, it's actually owned by the corporation Rome.
So it's owned by Rome?
Mm-hmm.
So if I had any complaints, would I have to reach out to FBI management, or the city?
What I'll do, I'll refer you over to Mr. Ben Martinez, who works directly with them. And tonight, there was interesting things that concerned me, that I will also be inquiring about.
And, and one more comment.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I vouch for, I don't know who else wants to come forth from the, from Rome, I'm sorry, but I suspect that there is some drug dealing going on, and you need to look at that.
All right.
And it's such a beautiful complex, it, I love living there. You know, I too, I'm a, I'm a Franklin alumni, and I left Highland Park, I'm loving Baldwin Park, because it reminds me of Highland Park back in the 90s, and it's a beautiful complex, and I just wanna bring that up to your attention, because I don't wanna see it go down.
And we're definitely not gonna see that, so chief, we could assign someone to look into that? I appreciate that.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I see Margarita walking up here, is she gonna take the lectern? Oh, yes, she is.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Let, let, hold on, hold on. Let her, come up and speak after her.
A question.
Sure, sure.
On item number 13, and I'm not sure if we're going to be addressing that, or do we wait, or do we speak at this point?
Yeah, 13 is a public hearing, I'll open it up, and you could speak at that time. Thank you. All right, yes, Ms. Margarita Vargas.
Okay, I'm just glad that you took that man out, you know, the, because I don't think you should allow to be, somebody to be unrespectful, especially to all the council, not just you, but everybody, because there was a lot of kids, students, and parents, and, you know, that, that doesn't look good. And I already told you that the city of West Covina, the city of Azusa, the city of Irwindale, they don't allow that. You know, and I don't, I don't know why you say that you cannot do anything, because you can, because they do it. How can they do it? In back of the agenda, it says that the, what do you call it? How you should act, and how you're not supposed to address the, a member of the council, you have to address the whole body. You cannot go into personal things. So I just want the lawyer to look into that, because I'm tired of listening to that man, or the other one too. Now, today was okay, but the first one, you know, it was really unrespectful, and that's not right.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay.
We won't tolerate it from this point on. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and close up the public communication. Mario, to answer your question about the, the actual property itself, yes, that was sold out to, to the developer. Of course, yeah, we are buying it back. They, they invested some major money to retrofit that, 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 that building. It would have probably cost us, what, maybe about a half a million for us to have done it ourselves, so we incorporated this developer, and yes, we are going to buy it back. And we're looking at the, the adjacent lots where the barber shops at, and to see what we can do to be able to expand that as a potential business for the city of Baldwin Park. With reference to the property that was mentioned here, I believe it's very unique, and it's complex, and I will be supporting, first of all, cannabis is not sold in the city of Baldwin Park, it's prohibited. So it's not something that you could go up there or have a type of store, where you'd go solicit some type of cannabis, so I just, for the record, so that you're aware of that. Yeah, just go ahead.
Yeah, and if I could add, Mayor, that there, there will be a public hearing on that item too.
Okay.
And if there's any other questions, staff, or I can answer those. They are only doing baking, they're actually currently baking products for Trader Joe's.
Yes.
This will only allow them to bake cannabis-infused products in conformance with the state law, and as you mentioned, there are no sales in Baldwin Park.
All right, okay.
Mayor, just a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
So what is the issue with the 25-foot?
The what?
There's an issue that it's 50 to 25?
It's, I think it's the...
We're gonna go to that item.
Once we open up public hearing, we'll explain. Okay, let's go and go into consent count, so council members, consent counters, we have items one through, one through 11. Members wishing to pull any item?
Yeah, eight, eight and nine.
Hold on, one at a time. Okay, Pacheco, eight, and...
Go ahead, councilman pulled eight and nine, so I'll just discuss...
Eight, and who's doing nine? Nine? All right, okay. This one, I'll make a motion to move consent count, with the exception of item number eight and item number nine, seconded by Councilmember Paul Hernandez. Any objections? See, no, so move. All right, this one, we'll go back to item eight, which is the adopt resolution 2019-048, and approve the purchase of real estate property located at 14824 Ramona Boulevard, also APN 838437-014-014. At this point, is Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Thank you, Mayor. I have voiced a concern about this before. First of all, I think the property is overpriced, and second of all, where is this money coming from to purchase this property? I don't think we should be paying such large amount of money for such property, we think we should work on trying to lower that price, and if you could tell me where the money's coming from?
All right, so at this point, I will, I will go ahead and have a CEO, because I know this is out of Future Development Funds, but go ahead, CEO, thank you.
Yes, the funding to purchase this is coming from the Future Development Fund, which was money's almost $7 million that was set aside from redevelopment agency times. The purpose of compiling these properties is to bring in, assemble two or three properties, and bring in a better development that will spur economic development in the city. In that case, the city will be selling the property to a future developer, we're already in negotiations with one and maybe more to do that, and we would at that point be able to recoup our funds and repay the Future Development Fund.
So do you have an idea how much we're looking into selling that property for?
We're still in negotiations with the developer, that will be brought back to City Council. Our intent is to recoup all of our, our costs.
All and more, I hope, because that's a lot of money. I feel that we could pay less for that property. And although we have that $7 million in future development, we can use the money elsewhere, instead of the full 800 in that property.
I think it's restricted funds, am I correct on that, or is that...
Yes, in the same areas, but somewhere else.
And it's all redevelopment money. All right, so at this point, at this point, did you wanna make a, I'll make a motion to adopt the, the resolution 2019-048, that is my motion.
I'll second.
Second, any objections?
Objection.
Okay, one objection, so at this point...
I would abstain from those two, Mayor.
Okay, one, okay, one objection, one abstention, so at this point, I will ask a city clerk, Ms. Jeanne M. Ayala, to, roll call, please, thank you.
Councilmember Avila?
No.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Abstain.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes, so the motion, the motion passes, one abstention, and one no. All right.
Mayor, I just quickly wanna say that for many, many years, that property was, you know, its viability was very uncertain, because we had interested parties but weren't really in the property, but weren't really sure what to do with the building, with the Red Car building, and we finally, you know, found a partner, a developer, that would retrofit that building, and that was really the, the risk, you know, was, was the retrofit of it, the repurposing of it, the redesign of it. So I definitely wanna acknowledge that that is, has been a great benefit for our community, because I think that people really wanted to preserve that, and it has history to the, you know, to this little neighborhood. So I just wanna, you know, make sure that we look at it also from that perspective, because it was a great challenge to find a partner who would help us repurpose it. Now that we have, I think it's an opportunity for our community, and so, you know, let's, let's also look at it that way. We're talking about item nine, right?
No, no.
I'm talking about Red Car Building, the item we just took up.
Yes, eight. All right, let's go and open up item nine, which is also a request by Councilmember Alejandro Avila, adopt, rest, no? Are we, no?
That was, that was nine, that she mentioned, that was a forty.
You vote on it, or what?
No, no, no.
I did, I replied on me.
Right, who requested nine?
I requested nine.
All right, so let me open it up, adopt resolution 2019, and approve the purchase of real, real property located at 14801 Baddillo Street. So at this point, Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, item nine is a red card.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, got it, got it.
But I got it. So, yes, my concern with this one is, the deal's already been done, the property has been sold, and, and now we're looking to buy it into 450. I, I love the Red Car Building, they did, did an amazing job with it, however, I just feel that the original contract should have been a lot better, we should have just incorporated, fixed that building, we'll sell you this property, and we get to keep the building. Just be a little more careful when we make deals like this, that we benefit more from it, because now we're purchasing it back. Yes, they put money into it, but this is a multimillion dollar company that just built a lot of homes there, and probably tripled their money, so I just feel that that's just not a good deal, that we have to pay back 450 for something that was originally ours, when we could have put it in the contract for them to fix it, and then they buy the other property for only 800 that they bought it for. That's the only comment I needed to make on that, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So at this point, I'll go ahead and move for, for item nine, which is adopt the resolution, that's my motion.
Second.
Any objections?
All abstain, Mayor.
Okay, one abstention? Okay, so at this one, Madam City Clerk, Ms. Jeanne M. Ayala.
Councilmember Avila?
No.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Abstain.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
And Mayor Lozano?
Yes, okay, the motion passes, three, one abstention and one no. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go over to item number 15, which is the, oh, excuse me, sorry about the, 13, Appeal of the, of the Conditional Use Permit Number 882, and Design Exception for the Construction of a 52-foot-tall monohucliptus wireless telecommunication facility located in residential zone pursuant to table. So, okay, so at this point, who is representing this?
Mayor, Planner Ron Garcia will give us a brief staff report. So this item was approved by the city planning commission, and was appealed to you, so you will be able to hear this item, and either uphold the planning commission's findings or overturn them. Ron?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, thank you, Shannon, for that. Thank you. As mentioned before, you is an appeal of Conditional Use Permit 882, and a Design Exception for the Construction of a 52-foot-tall mono-eucalyptus wireless facility, facility located on a residential zone. As mentioned, in January... As mentioned, in January, on January 24, 2018, the Planning Commission originally approved CUP 856, which expired in July, so roughly six months after the approval. Due to the expiration, the applicant was required to restart the process by submitting the Conditional Use Permit. On August 28, 2019, the Planning Commission approved the Conditional Use Permit and the Design Exception for the Construction of the Wireless Facility. An appeal of the Planning Commission decision was filed on September 9, 2019 by Gloria Heredia. The subject site consists of two lots in the shape of a flaglot and is approximately 21, over 21,000 square feet in size. The two lots are owned by Valley County Water District, who currently operates a pump station, which will remain on the site. Access to the site is provided by a driveway along Big Dalton, which is along here, so essentially, just to give you an overview of the street, you've got Big Dalton, Channing Way, Sierra Vista, here's the Wash.
Stairway.
I'm sorry, Sierra Way. You have the Wash, and then you have Stitchman Avenue across the Wash here. And again, this is the site, approximately, this is the location of the proposed cell tower. Again, this just gives you an overview of the surrounding properties. Again, they're all single-family, and as mentioned, you have, this is the subject site, and it's surrounded by single-family residential. The site is zoned single-family, and again, operated by Valley Water. Here, Ron, could you show the... Sure. The same slide?
Yeah, the one, the actual pic, the actual photo.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Here.
Where will it go?
So, roughly right here, I'm sorry.
Behind their houses.
So, here's the rear yards of the single-family residences off of Sierra Way, the cul-de-sac here. So, the cell tower is about 10 feet from the side property line, and approximately about 15 feet from the rear property line, which abuts the Wash here.
Do you know what it radiates, how much it radiates? What is it radiating?
I do not have that specific information, I would have to refer that to the applicant.
Okay, definitely.
It's not very far.
Yeah, I just, well, go ahead, that's fine. Okay, that's fine.
Continue with the, okay. Again, this is just a schematic, this is the site plan, the technical site plan of the location of the cell tower, so you can see in relation to the adjacent single-family home here and the cell tower here. Again, it is a flaglock configuration, this would be the existing access road, and again, Big Dalton, there's a single-family house here, and the two properties that are operated by Valley Water. The enclosure is located in this area as well. The enclosure measures six feet in height and will secure approximately 484 square feet of the equipment area. The equipment enclosure will screen two radio equipment cabinets and a 54-gallon diesel fuel emergency standby generator. The Planning Commission at the August 28 meeting did require additional landscape barrier along the rear property line here to buffer, to provide an additional buffer from the wireless facility enclosure. This is the schematic of the antenna array. Essentially, the proposed is 12 8-foot panel antennas distributed on a four antenna per three-sector array. There'll be 18 RRU's, three ray caps, and one microwave dish. Persuasive to the wireless ordinance, the facility, wireless facilities in residential zones are prohibited without an exception granted through the approval of a Conditional Use Permit. The maximum antenna height allowed in the residential zone is 30 feet. The proposed 52-foot-tall facility obviously exceeds the maximum allowed in that zone, and as a result, the applicant has submitted a request for the Design Exception pursuant to the municipal code. The applicant's Design Exception justification demonstrates that the facility must be placed and designed as proposed, with the minimum height necessary to service the area that is currently experiencing a coverage, a gap in coverage. The applicant was required to provide an alternative site analysis that identifies other suitable sites and co-location options with the goal of avoiding the construction of new towers. As part of the alternative site analysis, the applicant indicated that the subject site was identified as the most suitable. And again, this slide here shows you the gap in coverage. Essentially, the site is located here, so you can see the yellow, purple, and gray indicating increasingly worse levels of quality. So, and then you can see with the installation of the tower, you can see that the quality of services has improved, so it's removed that gap in coverage.
Ron, what other options, what other areas were they, were they proposing besides this one? Do we know where?
I do not have a map, the applicant can provide further details on all the specific sites that were analyzed by the RF engineer for that, so I'll refer that to the applicant.
Alright, so we don't have, we don't have a PowerPoint?
A map showing the entire, no.
Okay. No, no, don't interrupt, please, don't interrupt, I'll be opening the public hearing, I'll let you speak, okay?
The applicant's justification also indicates that the proposed facility will not create a significant visual impact, because the design of the facility is a stealth facility in the form of a mono-eucalyptus. For some of you that are familiar with the intersection of Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard at the Indigo Project, there is, that cell tower there that is in between two residential units is a perfect example of what this facility will be, which is a mono-eucalyptus. Again, it's 52 feet in height, and again, you can see the antenna array here, the enclosure. And this is just another angle showing the antennas with respect to the antenna array. These are photo simulations, this is taken from Stitchman, which is across the Wash. Here you can see the existing photo, and then here you can see the proposed photo sim, and again, that's showing, they've indicated, as required under the code, to plant two mature trees adjacent to the proposed facility. Again, here is the existing photo without the mono-eucalyptus, and here you can see the top of the proposed wireless facility from Channing Street. Again, this vantage point is from Big Dalton, again, this is the existing, and then the proposed cell tower here. Again, this is from Sierra Way, you can see again, the existing, and then the proposed cell tower, and again, showing the mature tree adjacent to the proposed cell tower.
Alright, at this point, let's go and have the applicant come up.
Very good.
Do you have a PowerPoint on the locations that we're also looking at?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Awesome, thank you.
So, to avoid jumping around, the PowerPoint with the locations is a little bit further in the presentation, but we will get to it, and we appreciate your patience on that. So, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, Kevin Sullivan for Verizon Wireless. So, here, here's an aerial that kind of shows the general gap in coverage that we have, and you can see that, here's the proposed site, and what's around is almost all were exclusively residential in nature. We've got Pacific up here, and you'll see in the alternative site analysis that we'll get to, we did look at some commercial and institutional uses that are sporadically located up here, they didn't work out, but even those commercial and institutional uses on Pacific have residential uses on two or three sides of them. So, we're trying to serve an area that has a gap, you know, with residential uses, and, you know, here's a non-residential use that we selected ultimately as the site. Here's, again, the overview, just so you know, there's a CMU block wall here, and all the way around, so we've got some screening already, there's going to be a CMU block around our equipment enclosure in the base of the tree, and we're also adding a CMU block about two-thirds of the way back here, and then landscaping across all of that. With respect to the design, this is a mono-eucalyptus design, we've got a fairly dense branch count up here, all of the antennas themselves are going to be painted to match the faux branch color, there's also going to be antenna socks on them, and then we've got some cladding on the tree trunk that mimics a eucalyptus. And then, of course, we've got the six-foot-high CMU block wall all the way around on four corners to shield our four sides, to shield the equipment. Here's a view from Sierra Way, looking back toward our project about right here, and you can see that in addition to us co-locating with the public utility use of the water public utility, there also are some electrical utility lines and poles, these go up to 70 feet, they have crossarms, and they've got wires, and those are not disguised, and our public utility use is going to be disguised. Here's another view, looking straight down the driveway, back to approximately where the location would be, you can see the 70-foot-high poles back there, and then you can see that in the general area, there are a number of tall trees, and with the two mature eucalyptus trees that we're going to plant with our facility, we believe that that's going to blend in sufficiently with the neighborhood. Here's another view on Big Dalton Avenue, looking to the north, again, showing that there are some mature trees in the area. With respect to the significant gap in coverage, already, we have 55% of homes in the United States use wireless only, they don't have a landline, and 90% of homes in the US use wireless service. In addition, 80% of the 911 calls now come from cell phones and other wireless devices. Here is an overview of Verizon's network in the area, so you've got an existing Verizon site there, and there, and up there, and there, down there, and over here, but we've got this big area in the middle, so we've got 1.9 miles between these two Verizon facilities, and about 1 and 3/4 miles between those two, and right in the middle, we have this gap that we need to fill, and it's in a residential area, and that's where we have to go to fill the gap. This is some new updated, as of October, or I guess November 2019, RF slides, again, showing the coverage in the area. If it's not green, then there's not good in-building coverage, which is Verizon's objective. We want to get in-building coverage or penetration, so that people can use their wireless devices in their homes for, for whatever reason, including work. Here is the, the updated RF slides with respect to the coverage area that we're going to have, the coverage footprint from what we call the Chevalier Site, that's the subject site. It does a good job now of starting to connect with some of the, you know, the edges of the coverage footprint of some of the adjacent sites, and does a good job of filling the coverage gap. This is just some, some more of the same. With respect to property values, 75% of prospective home buyers say that good cellular connection was an important factor to them purchasing a home. With respect to millennials, 83% said that is, it's the most important factor that they have, or that they utilize in buying a home. Health issues, I know there was a question about, there might have been a question from your mayor, and I'd be happy to address that specifically.
The radiation.
Yeah, so, the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, regulates all wireless carriers and all of their wireless towers, they all have to operate within health safety standards that have been set by the FCC in conjunction with Environmental Protection Agency, the Food and Drug Administration, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, and other federal agencies. And so, they set these standards to protect human health safety, and, you know, typically, the facilities are magnitudes less than what that protective level is. Here, and it's part of the staff report that you have, it's one of the attachments, we did, we had an independent third party do an analysis of our equipment and take a look at the amount of RF energy that it would be producing, and that report determined that this facility would produce 1.2% of the health safety standard. So, in other words, we're, you know, we are magnitudes less than what we could be under FCC standards that are designed to protect human health safety. We also did a noise study, and the determination there was that on all of the adjacent property lines, the operations of our facility will comply fully with the city's noise ordinance, will meet the noise ordinance, we come below it with respect to any of the adjacent property Here is a slide that gets to the question about our alternative site analysis, what were the alternatives that we looked at? There were ultimately 13 that we looked at, and we're already starting with a pretty limited palette of options. So, we did our best to try and stay out of residential if we could, there are a lot of, I think, somewhere, I think this is Pacific, we did take a look at some institutional and commercial uses on Pacific, but were not able to find the right fit, we either couldn't find a landlord who was willing to do a deal, we couldn't meet setbacks, we didn't have a high enough platform, like a rooftop, for instance, to utilize. So, here, we need a facility that gets above this urban environment that we have, gets above a fairly dense array of homes, gets above the vegetation, and the top of antennas that we're proposing are at 46 feet. So, for us to replicate that on an existing building, we would need a building that's four stories high, and those just don't exist in this particular area. So, here's our proposed location, we did look at a number of other areas or locations or options in the area, and they did not fit for various reasons. And in fact, we started doing this in October of 2016, over three years ago, we started sending out letters to potential alternative sites to see who was interested, and eventually, over more than a year, we narrowed it down to this was the site where we had a willing landlord, where we could meet code, where we could get a facility that would allow us to fill the significant gap in coverage that we had. Here is a list of all of the sites, there are six on this page, and there are seven on the next one. Recently, the Valley County Water District down here proposed another site, unfortunately, it's probably over a mile, maybe two miles away, up around Arrow Highway, it's way outside of our search ring, and way outside of any kind of area or location that could fill the gap that we have. I think you've already seen this. So, that's our presentation, we're, we've got some technical people here, some planning people here who worked on the application, that can help answer any questions or assist in providing any information.
Alright, thank you very much. At this point, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for, I'll start out with those that are in favor. So, you are in favor of this project, come up to the lectern. Okay? See no interest? Oh, they're in favor, okay. Jose? Oh, there's Javi back there.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, my name's Jose Martinez, I'm the General Manager of Valley County Water District. Couple things, I've been probably working with this project for the last three years since I started at the district. This is something that water districts have done, and I've done many of these projects throughout my career at other water districts, most notably at the Walnut Valley Water District, where we did projects similar to this in the cities of Walnut and Diamond Bar in residential areas next... Bar, in residential areas next to, you know, on our reservoirs, any property that we had. One thing I did want to note, and we did have individuals come to one of our board meetings and through public comments, make some comments regarding this project. One thing I did want to state is that the funding that we receive with the agreement, and we have signed that agreement, that land lease agreement with Verizon, so we did sign that document over two years ago, but the money that we actually receive from this land lease agreement, we actually utilize that money to fund our Affordable Rate Program. We launched that program for our customers that currently qualify for the Edison and Gas Company Care Program. Right now, the way the Prop 218 process is, we cannot use any rate-generated funds to fund any type of rate-affordable program. So this is one of the major contributing projects that the district has. We do have other cellphone towers at our other facilities, and we utilize that funding to fund this Affordable Rate Program. It was a great program, which we launched for our customers. So that's the only comments that I have. Thank you very much.
As a public agency, Jose, I'm just curious, what is the revenue anticipated from having this tower there?
I don't know the exact number, but it's around $24,000, that we see about $2,000 a month. Our total funding for Affordable Rate Program is about $120,000, and that's what the available funding that we have. So certainly, any additional funding that we can bring in to fund this program, we can certainly do reevaluate that program and either offer it to additional customers. Right now, we have that program available to up to 10% of our customers at a specific rate, but any additional funds which we receive, such as cellphone tower revenue, can go to, so we could further evaluate that program and offer it to our customers.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So at this point, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? If you're opposed, come up to the lectern. Please state your name. You have approximately three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Gloria Heridia, resident of Baldwin Park for 28 years. I happen to live on Sierra Way. As prominent leaders in our community, who we trust and protect and serve our citizens of Baldwin Park, we are concerned and oppose the Planning Committee's decision and approval of CP 8A2, decided on August 28, 2019. It is the construction of the Verizon 52-foot cell tower in the residential zone within close proximity of residence structures. The building is about 10 feet from my backyard, and the cell tower would be about 10 feet, if not less, from my neighbor's backyard. Based on the information the Planning Committee reviewed and Verizon presented, it appeared to be incomplete to have made a well-informed decision, not considering the report completed on 10/14/19, which was after the fact, and it was completed with using Verizon's information. Building the 52-foot cell tower in a residential zone, an exemption allowed in the municipal code, but according to the municipal code, other alternative sites are to be considered. Commercial and industrial sites are to be exhausted. You did not properly address this exception. The analysis was not sufficient to say you have met this exception. So how was this decision or conclusion made? And other sites, if other sites were considered, what sites would those be? Why were they not adequate? The exception of height and zoning were not met. The facts were scarce, and the data was gathered by whom to determine there was a gap in coverage? Was it an independent party, or was it just self-serving? Was this provided? Who confirmed the need without bias or self-serving? Did you, as a community, as community leaders, did you use your due diligence in the name of our community and in our people? Per Code Section 153.181.100, exception, small letter "b," shall significantly include an analysis comparing the operation of the facility as its proposed heights with its operation at the maximum height permitted herein. The applicant should also address whether the additional height would be required if the facility were located at a different site. The purpose of the analysis is to ensure the additional height is permitted only when technicality necessary for the provision of service. Code section, I was told I was going to have longer because we paid for the...
Go ahead and read it. Go ahead. That's fine.
So 153.04.010 intent and purpose. Residential zones are established to provide residents with comfortable, healthy, safe, and pleasant living environments. Those zones should be separate from incompatible and disruptive activities that may affect, conflict with this purpose. The property in question is leased or owned by Valley County Water, which has a debunked water well at its site, which was also a super fuel site, government funds given to clean up the well. And in fact, EPA labeled it as VOC, volatile organic compound. As this was not enough, you are also planning an above-ground power vault with, that will sit eight feet from the residential property line. This will house the 15-kilowatt, 54-gallon diesel-fuel backup generator. Other sites have complained about the constant buzzing coming from the vault. The vaults have been known to blow up, causing injury, property damage, and even death. Was this a money-motivated vote? Is this an arms-length transaction? Is there a bias in this vote? It is apparent that there are relatives on the City Council team to those on the Valley County Water District. Is this a problem? What about emergency response access? Will that be through Big Dalton, or through the flood controls, where they have taken down the small chain-link fence and put up a new, taller chain-link fence with access to this site? And the entrance on Big Dalton is very narrow. As a community, our concern is these towers have been known to catch fire, and with debris may fall on homes, cause more damage and injuries, and possibly death. Let's discuss the microwave drum to be installed, and what about the 5G aspect of this tower? Because the tower needs to be closer for the speed and 5G to work, where's the next tower being built? As our community representatives, did you exercise your due diligence and do a site visit to see what it entails to have a 52-foot cell tower? Let's not forget the two live trees and 36-inch containers in a residential zone. It is a visual impact. The tower's 52 feet, 12 feet taller than most telephone and electrical posts, which we currently have in our neighborhood. We already have industrial pollution at this site, jet fuel in the well. Noise pollution in the past was never addressed by the city or Valley County Water Districts. Regarding the noise and nuisance issue, can you guarantee the noise is going to be less than five decimals as prescribed in your standards of the municipal code 153.180.060? Let's consider a new site for Verizon's 52-foot tower. Located in industrial and commercial zones, we have several, the Marriott City Hall, Walmart, co-locations on existing towers. There are currently several Verizon towers encircling Baldwin Park. Is there really a need for this tower in a residential area within 62 feet of an elementary school? I have read the reports. Some I could understand, others, the prints were too small, and yet, the only thing Verizon did was reiterate the code section in their proposal, but nothing to prove their due diligence, nor yours as public leaders of Baldwin Park. Very disappointed to see you all agreed to this without even really looking into what was written. You encouraged us to appeal the decision. The cost was outrageous, and yet, you're still moving forward with the 52-foot cell tower in the residential zone without the courtesy of listening to our appeal. Apparently, our plea may be falling, excuse me, on deaf ears. Pursuant to Code Section 153.18.020, purpose and intent is to, per N3, protect the visual character of the city through careful design, sittings, landscapes, and innovative camouflage techniques for antennas, encouraging the installation of new towers and antennas in commercial and industrial zones adverse visual impacts, and limiting the proliferation of new towers by permitting the construction of new towers only after all reasonable opportunities have been exhausted, and to encourage the co-location of antennas so as to minimize adverse visual impact. We ask you to reconsider and build a tower in a commercial or industrial site. Stay away from the residential areas, please, as my life might depend on it. I have a picture here of the cell towers, where Verizon has cell towers up on this picture. This is from the internet. The internet doesn't lie, right? And then, this is all the cell towers in Baldwin Park. I can give you this, if you want to look at it. We received a report in this last email from Ron, sorry, from, the report from Verizon by EBI Consulting. All the information was given to them by Verizon. It stated in the report. I just used your code section for my writings. The pictures that they provided, they're all pictures of Big Dalton, but they don't show you how it affects the people on Sierra Way, on Stitchman, because it's very visible from there. And Mayor, I think you were at, right next door, at an open house, because my neighbor decided to sell his house.
Yeah. Beautiful home, by the way.
Yeah. It is. And he spent a lot of time and money. He loved living in Baldwin Park, and he sold his home.
All right.
So I hope he will consider our plea.
All righty. Okay. We're going to go on to the next speaker. Thank you very, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Good evening, the Mayor and Councilpeople. My name is Gloria Quinones. I'm a resident of Baldwin Park for, in our current home, for over 35 years, but I grew up in Baldwin Park. I love it, but now I'm feeling pushed away. I thank you for hearing us today, but I stand here as a long-term, loyal resident of Baldwin Park. I stand here disappointed with our city government, because I wonder, did you not, do you not understand our city demographics, or the people that mailed out the flyers? Do they not understand their city demographics? Both letters to the public hearing for the approval of this construction and for today's City Council meeting were all in English. And as we walked around, my neighbors and I, to speak to the rest of our neighbors, I would say 75% of those people that I spoke to were non-English speakers. The majority are Spanish-speaking, but we have many Chinese and Vietnamese-speaking residents. So unfortunately, we don't have the support here present, because I don't think they understood what was happening, or when the meeting was going to be held. We did the best we could to walk around and let them know. We translated some of the letters ourselves. So I wonder, have you forgotten the people you're serving? And my expectation would be that someone would talk to us, the residents of Baldwin Park, and discuss how we feel about this site, about the possible construction, or now the construction of this 52-tower in our neighborhood. Right now, it feels like the people that are to serve us don't care. Back in the 90s, when the Superfund site was looked at to clean up the water wells by the EPA, there was not an option for them to clean a well somewhere else. It was the only site. But they took the time to come and speak to all the residents. They held meetings. They listened to our concerns, our worries. They were able to tweak some of their planning based on that. They listened that we needed a higher wall. They built the wall. They did what they could. Obviously, the water was of no good, but it's there. But they took the time, and that's what I would like from you, is time, and hear us out, and hear our concerns. I'm concerned about the potential noise of this power vault that's going to be added. I live immediately, or next to the electrical panel or the power vault that constantly hums now, and I understand there's going to be an additional vault added to that site. It's only eight feet away from my property line, only 10 feet from my first patio chair, only 18 feet to my living room. So that humming is frustrating. It's constant. When the water well was operating, it was worse. Not that the water well is not in operation, it's a little more tolerable, but people come over and rightly sense the sound. Constant humming is disruptive and health hazard. It creates headaches. It creates anxiety. It creates dizziness. So much is affected. Am I just stop?
Yeah, continue, continue.
Sorry. The FCC also says there's no radiation exposure, or nothing to be worried about, yet the current report that was provided on October the 14th states that they have to install 14 warning signs on that site. One of them saying that the employee that works at that tower must wear a tag to measure the radiation. So if they feel that it's safe, why can't the employee go work there without a radiation tag? But we're going to live there 24/7, so we will be exposed to plenty of radiation that is safe. I'm concerned of the 54-gallon diesel tank that would be nearby. That is a huge fire hazard. Who's going to promise me that it won't explode, and that is not a hazard for us? I am concerned for the heist of that tower. Should it catch fire, it could easily fall on one of our neighbor's homes. And if it catches fire, how soon will the emergency personnel be able to access it? The driveway from Big Dalton is quite narrow. Are they going to go through the channel? Or are they going to go through our homes? And is it going to fall on somebody, on a person, creating, of course, injury or possible death? They mentioned in the proposal that they would look at zone and character, that there won't be a change to the visible site. Two measured trees in a 36-inch box, I doubt will be of any help. But that's the least of my concerns. I really don't care so much about the aesthetics, but the radiation and the sound. Can a decision be made? I agree. Can a decision be made in a non-bias? I know that some people in the City Council also have family members in the Valley Water County. And so I am concerned that a true, honest decision is not being made. I hope and trust that you would do the right thing for the residents affected by this possible construction of the 52 cell tower, or at least research it and review it, and see, can it be built at another site? Can it be built in a commercial or industrial site? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Candace Liu, and I live at Sierra Way. I just want to say, I'll try to keep it short, because I want to go home, too. I had two questions for the presentation, but I'll keep that at the end. The house that you saw, or you viewed, that was my brother's house.
Oh, very beautiful.
And we lived in Baldwin Park for 30 years. Both of us are products of the Baldwin Park Unified School District, and he spent five years building that house, fixing it, and he loved it. So you could imagine the agony he had to go through to put that up for sale, the minute he heard a tower might be built right behind his backyard. One of the pictures shows the house with the pool. That's his house. So he is literally sleeping underneath the tower. And he has two kids, so obviously, he's worried. I also want to say that, as a longtime resident of Baldwin Park, if a cell tower does go up, I might be leaving, too, because to me, I'm borderline millennial, and cell coverage is not important to me. My health is more important. Because as Councilwoman Avila says, we're all at risk. We could be, one day, at a very healthy place, and the next day, we might be, you know, given a situation where we might be put out in the streets. So this might be something that contributes to it, and I'm not willing to risk that. The two points I wanted to make was, both presenters said there was limited cell coverage. Are we talking about just Verizon customers? Or are we talking about everybody in general? And the other comment I want to make, he had said that about 75% of 911 calls come from cellphones, but my understanding is you don't need cell coverage to call 911. I just wanted to clarify that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you. Come on up. Come on up. Let's go.
Slightly thrown off. My name is Diana Alvarez. I live on the Stitchman side.
Okay.
And what I was going to say is not going to work here right now. I do agree with a lot of the things that Gloria, and the other Gloria... I do agree with a lot of the things that Gloria and the other Gloria have stated and also that Candace has stated. Some of my concerns of a fifty-two-foot cellphone tower there are if it catches fire, where it sits in that lot, how are emergency services going to reach it? If the cellphone tower collapses, there is no fall zone because you're already saying it's ten feet away from the fence, so minus ten, that means forty, forty-two feet falling on top of the pool and the house. You know, possible destruction of property. But if there's kids in the pool, they get, you know, God forbid. I'm sorry. Collect myself here. Some of the other issues are the workers working in the cellphone towers. There have been accidents and deaths. Other issues, criminal activity, vandalism and graffiti, falling debris. Those are so close, ten feet next to the fence. Would we get good Santa Ana, something detaches? It's not good. Other concerning situations would be, and this has been documented, the only reason I got this was I read it, was suicides. People use them to commit suicide. So my question is, how do you propose to address those issues about emergency services? Also, again, to reiterate, the gate, there was never a gate in the back there, and suddenly now there's a large access that's off the flood control channel. Is that legal? All right. And I guess I'm done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, moving along. Oh, I forgot.
Good evening. My name is René Solis, and I live at one forty-five eighty-three Sierra Way. I am not really so close to where this antenna, this antenna will build, but let me tell you this, it's right in front of my house, beautiful view. I can see their homes, so now the antenna actually will take away your nice home view because most of us, we've been living there for over twenty-five years. And I just want to state this with Mr. Verizon people here. They said that there was a gap. So can you explain this to me? We have millennials living in our homes, two, we have three, four, four, and we've been customers for Verizon for over, I don't know, seven, ten years. Do you think, Mayor Lozano, there will be customers at them if it was a gap? Having millennials, they're so demanding. One preacher, some, one day, they said. You can probably go and away to church and forget the Bible, and you will say, that's fine. If you forget the phone, oh, you're going back and get the phone because the phone is your life, right? So let me ask the Verizon people, this is truth. I mean, are millennials don't have a gap in one forty-five eighty-three Sierra Way? Otherwise, I will belong to FCS or the other one. I want to make a commercial. So please, what I wanted to tell you is, I'm okay with Verizon. I'm not talking in their behalf because of good service going on. I don't want an antenna because as soon as they build an antenna, I might not have the best service because it's too close to my house. And that's all I want to say.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak under the public hearing? Okay, so at this point, I will allow the rebuttal from the representatives that are here at this point. So if you want to come up here and rebut, I will just state it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could get our slides back up, our way to do that? All right, so to address some of the issues that were raised, thank you for your patience. Verizon is going to have an unmanned facility. There will be service trips that come out approximately once a month, maybe once every two months after construction, but this is going to be an unmanned facility. There's not going to be people out there, you know, every day doing any kind of work or activity. There's going to be very limited trips to this site. In addition, the diesel fuel generator is a backup generator. It only runs if there's an emergency, and it's not something that's going to be part of the everyday activities at this site. Regarding the towers and their structural integrity and whether they're going to catch fire and fall over, there's a requirement before we can build that we're going to have to submit a structural analysis test to the city building department. They're going to take a look at it and make sure that neighborhood safety is ensured. And I think anecdotally, we can understand that there are thousands of similar facilities like this all around Southern California that are going to be facing the same circumstances, the same wind, the same whatever. And there just aren't any reports of these facilities falling over and doing any kind of damage, and that's because there's a requirement in every jurisdiction to make sure that there's a structural analysis to ensure the structural integrity of the facilities. Also, this is not a 5G site. This is a 4G site. It's a macro site. It is being built specifically to serve the gap in, you know, coverage that is shown there. The facility is also eighteen feet lower in height, so we've got forty-six-foot top of antennas, six more feet of branches on top to do additional concealment of the antennas. But even at fifty-two feet, we're at least eighteen feet lower than the line of utility poles with crossarms and lines that run at the back of this water district lot. Again, regarding noise, we have to comply with the city code. Every use in the city has to comply with the city code. We've done a report that shows that our everyday operations will comply with the city code. We will be under the decibel level at every surrounding property line with respect to our day-to-day operations, and if we aren't, then the city is going to come over and hit us with a code enforcement action and make us comply. Regarding other locations, there was a discussion about we should go to an industrial or a commercial site. We'd love to if there was one in the area. We know that we wouldn't get opposition. We probably would get a director's decision. We would have had a permit months ago, maybe years ago even. But the problem is, is in this gap area, there is no industrial or commercial area that we can go in. We're trying to serve a gap in a residential area. We have to put our facility there. And we've done so, tried to do so, in the least intrusive means possible. Again, we have a design with a dense branch count. We've got painting the antennas, antenna socks, you know, cladding on the tree trunk, adding the two trees adjacent to it. And so we're providing a good design with respect to the location that we have. Regarding FCC warning signs, every single cell facility, a macro site like this in the United States is required by the FCC to post warning signs. Those are not for adjacent residences. They are for the workers that are up close and personal with the antennas and may be there, you know, for whatever reason, to do some kind of maintenance. But again, the FCC sets the health safety standards that every one of these facilities has to comply with. That standard is up there. We're at one-point-two percent of that standard with respect to the RF energy that comes off of this site. So Verizon did an analysis. Its RF engineers took a look at this type of data showing where we have coverage showing where there are gaps. There are customer complaints. There's drive test data. These facilities cost a significant amount of money to put in. If there wasn't a gap here for our network, if there wasn't a need to make sure that all of these surrounding facilities could talk to each other, that there can be a handoff between some of these facilities of the signal as people are passing through the area or living there. If we didn't need it, we wouldn't build it. Verizon isn't in the business of building very expensive facilities that it doesn't need. So we have determined that there is a gap here. We've done our best to locate it in a spot that's going to be as least intrusive as possible, and we put a good design on it. We're going to make sure that it's safe, that it complies with all city codes, and we would request, therefore, that the council would uphold the planning commission's unanimous approval of this project and deny the appeal.
All right, at this point, I just, of course, my concern is, first of all, this would not be occurring in an affluent community, and we obviously know that. So, and that is a concern of mine, and the fact that the proximity to the homes, and you mentioned that you're seeing that residents there don't have contact. I mean, they lack the, the, the coverage. Are these complaints, or how do you, how do you, how do you get this, that information?
Again, there are customer complaints that the Verizon receives. You know, the RF engineers have done that analysis. They had that data. It's discussed in the two RF engineers' letters, RF engineer letters that we provided the city, the updated one tonight. But this, these maps also show that there's a significant gap in coverage. The green colors are good in-building penetrating coverage that allows people to use their devices wirelessly in their homes. The yellow is typically, you know, in-car or outdoor, and you can see that there's very little yellow and no green basically in this entire area. Verizon's network objective is to have in-building penetrating coverage, and the RF engineers have determined, after taking a look at data, that we don't have that in this area.
I just, go ahead, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Thank you. I just want to say that I appreciate, you know, your presentation and have actually been in your shoes, so I fully appreciate the work that has gone into this project, probably more than you will recognize tonight. I do want to say that I have also sat on the planning commission and have supported numerous projects. But I have also, you know, really advocated in, for commercial and co-location. And when I look at this site, I just think, you know, it's going to be an eyesore, and it's the aesthetics that are a concern for me because fifty-two feet, although it is being screened by a eucalyptus tree, and I appreciate that, and I know that it is expensive. I just don't, I think it will still be aesthetically unpleasing for the neighborhood, not even to go into, you know, some of the other concerns that were presented by the community. And I do want to mention to the community that this item came before the planning commission. So this is the first time that we here on the city council are hearing this. And in the past, I have, I'm a Verizon customer. And so again, I'm not, you know, I don't want to shut down your project, but I also don't think that it's a fit for this site. And I think that, you know, I have to go with that conviction, just having, you know, having had exposure to this on both sides. And I, I know that, you know, it is a great site for you. You found a partner, Valley County Water District, that is amenable and, but, you know, perhaps could we consider, there is, you know, Buente and Pacific intersection, you know, with, and I saw that you tried working with Seven-Eleven across the street. There is a new building that's going in. Perhaps that would, you know, screen a little better. You know, there are some commercial sites in the area that I think would not be as intrusive as going into a purely residential or maybe, you know, looking at a smaller type of antenna. So I'm sorry, but I, I do feel bad because I've stood in your shoes, and I fully appreciate, you know, what you're doing here tonight. But I'm going to have to say I can't support this.
All right. And again, I share, I share what you're saying as well. First of all, I'm hearing that there's coverage in that area. Am I correct? Do you have coverage in there? You know, yeah, you know, the millennials, they would have told you straight out. So, all right, so let me just say, at this point, I just want to say about the coverage. So at this point, I'm going to give it to my colleague, councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Verizon for your presentation as councilmember. Garcia, it does take a lot of work to do your research and put all this together, but I also need to listen to our community. And I agree, I'm very concerned over the safety issues, the, when I heard the fifty-four gallon of diesel ten feet away from somebody's property, that brought red flags to me. The aesthetics, I'm not so concerned about. I am concerned about the height of the tree. And again, in an emergency, I hear your concerns. How is anybody going to get to that tree or whatever it is to put it out in case of a fire if it falls? God forbid it falls into a property. We never know what's going to happen. There could be an earthquake. I am concerned. I don't think it's a good location for, for that. As councilmember Gomen Garcia said, maybe by the Seven-Eleven. I don't know, maybe by Walmart. There's no homes out in that area, but maybe you should do a little more research of other locations for this. Thank you.
Mayor?
Oh, yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
First, I want to thank all of you for coming out, our residents. I appreciate all of you coming here and expressing your concerns. We're here late at night, and you're here, so your concerns are my concerns as a representative of the community. And also Verizon, thank you for your extensive information that you brought forth to us. And I wanted to mention that, you know, I have a family member on the water board. It's my wife. Her and I never talked politics. If we did, we'd probably live in two separate homes, but let me just state that one of you said, you know, you guys said a lot. I mean, I commend all of you for the extensive information you brought forth, the research you did from the water quality and all the issues that impact your homes, and that was, that was impressive. I mean, I hired you for staff. You guys did so much research. You guys did an outstanding job, so thank you for bringing forth that. And I, you know, I sided with all of you. I think all of you brought very valid concerns and issues, and, you know, I represent the community. I represent you and your concerns, and I'll do that. I think Verizon, you need to do a better outreach to the community. I mean, maybe there should have been, one of the speakers that came up talked about how, you know, when the water was being, was on a contamination, and they were talking about, you know, what was that called? The, was it? Well, was it the Superfund sites? And I remember that. There was a big issue going on in the community. The EPA came out and, and, you know, so that's why a lot of people were being informed. So I just think that there needs to be more outreach, just the same way, to all of you guys. If Verizon had done its homework and talked to these homeowners and this community, maybe, you know, it would have been all approved. But I think you guys need to do more outreach, more homework. If I get, you know, the community saying, yeah, we like this site, think it's great, you know, I'll support it, but I can't do it if my residents haven't been talked to, outreach. They spoke about the, you know, the different languages that we have here, you know, Spanish, English, Vietnamese, all the Asian languages, and it was only printed out in English. So I think, you know, those issues have to be addressed and that. So, yeah, I don't think I could support it at this time, but anyways, Mayor, continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I just, again, the folks in the residents have certainly emailed us and have, you know, provided quite a bit of overview this evening. There are a lot of things that were stated this evening, at least from those that are asking us to deny this application. I certainly don't agree with all of them, but there are certain aspects that I certainly agree with, similar to what councilmember Garcia and Avila stated. You know, when individuals, homeowners buy a home, you know, they come with a sense of expectation of what that, of what they're going to be living in. And I could understand where, you know, they could be, they're, excuse me, they are concerned of having a cell tower in their backyard, even though it's not in their backyard, but it's adjacent to that. So it's, it is concerning to me that, you know, that's one of those pieces where, you know, I just can't necessarily support, especially at the, at the height of fifty-two feet. We do have other, other towers that are just as high in residential areas, you know, namely over on Baldwin Park in Merced. That is a new facility that, I'm not sure if that's yours or not, but there is a tower there. So to say that, you know, these things don't fit within our community, there are times and places that make sense, and this is one of those where it does not. So with our colleagues over with the Valley County Water District, you know, I know this, I know this issue very well. You know, I was there when I think we actually nominated and supported those documents and this, this application, especially for what it does for our community, you know, serving the, you know, the. the, you know, the Affordable Rates Program. It's a, it's a program that I championed. So I understand, you know, the, the loss that will, that will come as a result of this. But what I would ask is for Verizon, you know, to continue to work in a, in a partnership with Valley County Water District, to see if there's other facilities that they have where you could, you know, do additional pieces of work with them and not to necessarily, you know, think that this is, you know, a close-case scenario for anything in the future. Because again, you know, we are a city that's business-friendly, and that does include, you know, providing best services to all of our customers, whether it's cellphone or residential services. So with that said, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion to bring back a resolution approving the appeal based on the status. So at this point, that is my motion. Is there a second? Any objections? See none, so move. Okay, your appeal does go through. So at this point, what we'll do is bring it back. And again, as was stated by all the council members, we look forward in, in working with, with, with this, with this organization to place it elsewhere. So thank you very much for appealing. All right. Okay, so at this point, at this point, we're going to, we'll just finish off the cannabis one, and then from there, we're going to go into closed session real quick, and we'll be out. Okay, so item 14, which is a request to the city council and the planning, planning commission on the amendment of City of Ballpark Municipal Code, Chapter 127 and Chapter 153, Table, at this point. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and, is this a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point, have a good one. At this point, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone in support? Anyone opposed? Okay, now declare the public hearing closed. At this point, council members, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that the city hold a public hearing and introduce their first reading by title only, Ordinance 1443, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballpark, California, Amendment to Table 153, 0150020, Section 153, 120, and Table 153, 15004. Want me to repeat that? And then, okay.
Second.
Okay, second. Any objections? See none.
Hold on there, just.
I have a question.
Can staff give me a quick, a quick, what is this about?
Sure. This is, this is the, this is the actual cannabis facility that's located. Go ahead.
So, yeah, this allows the cannabis facility located at that address to do manufacturing. It does not allow extraction. They're going to be doing food preparation and baking of food goods. And the dangerous part is extraction, and because that's not allowed, we felt the reduced distance was justified.
And Alejandro and I will be...
So just really quick, where is that address again?
Oh, it's right here. The address on here?
Yeah, Ben.
Where?
I highly recommend, Alejandro and I are going to take a tour.
Yes, I'm going to take a tour.
Need to take a tour of this facility, just to let everyone know, all their products are sold to Trader Joe's and to Whole Foods and several others. So, and they're located here in Ballpark. Very unique of how their, their, their products are mixed and so on and so forth, but go ahead.
I just think the residents need to know that they're not extracting.
Yeah, you'll see it.
Because that's a big concern to them.
I think it's important too, Mayor, that there's not going to be any marijuana or flour or anything like this. The only thing they're going to have is oil that's going to go into a baked goods.
Yes.
It's not going to be like cannabis on the property.
No. And I went there and he demonstrated the, the actual container, and that's what I wanted to say.
And the only concern I have with that too is, is there any cannabis business that are going to try to come to this area, and that being only 25 feet away, or...
And they're going to be able to sell out of there?
Not sell.
Okay.
But only be able to do this exact type of use.
Okay, perfect.
And they would have to come for, to you for a permit and approval and background check.
We'll take a tour on that.
Yes, we need a tour.
Okay, all right. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and review Commission Act Place for the next meeting, and then 16 for the following meeting as well. And then, now, I will go ahead. So at this point, I will go ahead and close the, the city council. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. At this point, I'd like to open the Ballpark Charitable Relief Foundation, also known as BP-CRF. So at this point, we have the new business. We have the approval meeting. At this point, I'll make a motion for items one through three. That's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. At this point, good evening. Viva Ballpark. We're going, we're going into closed session. What, no, already closed it. City Council, yeah.
This yours? Thank you, it was a great clip.
Let me...
What's that? We're going to have to reopen. So should I leave it open then? I thought we... All right, real quick, I'm going to, I will go ahead and open up the city council meeting so we could report out for that meeting. So at this point, I make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, thank you.
Can I take long?
No.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
David. David.
Right. Thank you. Can I do a report out of closed session? Can, can page our screen on YouTube right now? Can thank you? Yeah.
What is it? Now. Next. When you have to, when you have to, when you have to, sometimes.
You have to. 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 You have to.